I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, here we go. Welcome to the Jackson Township Planning Board. It is October 28th. According to the Open Publics Meeting Act, this meeting has been publicly noticed in all the appropriate forums and methods deemed appropriate to conduct this meeting. And we'll pass it off to our Madam Chairwoman.
Good evening, everyone. We'll have the roll call, please. Mr. Bresi.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein. Ms. DiMarzo.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Tremmer. Mr. Weingart. Mr. Wall. Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here. I'll look for a motion for payment of the voucher for the recording secretary, please.
So moved. Sullivan, second.
Bresi. Okay. We'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the October 7th regular meeting, please.
So moved.
Mr. Bresi? Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes, and we didn't do a roll call for the voucher payment.
Okay. Mr. Bresi? Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell.
Gentlemen, any engineering or planning matters? Thank you. Mr. Shea?
Yes, just to keep everybody in the loop, a meeting was conducted on Friday, October 25th, between fire departments, zoning, engineering, planning board. We reviewed the process by which, for jurisdictional purposes, fire reviews their plans, looks at the utility plan, looks at all different aspects of what they need to approve along the path of not just at the board level, but the subsequent approval process afterwards. I believe it was a productive meeting. I believe that they may be utilizing a new software to time and date stamp the site plans that they are presented. So it's a little bit of a new process and it'll be evolving as we're going because obviously it's new to everybody. Also, they linked up with the MUA and the township engineer to discuss different aspects of the approval process, checklist process, and different aspects by which they take a look at what they have to do on their end. So it was a productive meeting. It's going to be an evolving, continuing process. It's really just to keep everybody updated.
And it will begin in the new calendar year 2025?
Yeah, this is just beginning. This is a preliminary meeting.
Great, thank you. That's great. And I know, Mr. Tremmer, I'm sorry he's not here, but he was very interested in this whole process going forward, so that's good. We have a number of resolutions. Ms. Morrison, if you would read those, please.
Sure. Resolution number 2024-33. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with required variances and waiver relief for a two-story house of worship with a full basement for 922 Hyson LLC, block 1204, lot 34. Eligible to vote are Mr. Bresi, Mr. Heller, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion approved.
Second, Heller.
All in favor? Oh, we still have to do...
Let me do them. Yeah. Mr. Bresi?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-34. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting minor subdivision approval with design waivers to adjust the location of existing lot lines for Yehuda Alter, block 14001, lots 7 and 32.10. Eligible to vote are Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Riker, Ms. Rose, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Motion, please. Motion?
Second, Riker.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-35. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval and preliminary and final major subdivision approval with required variances and design waivers for a new house of worship with accessory mikvah and two new vacant lots for Call Hamster Hills, Inc., block 5202, lot 1. Eligible to vote are Mr. Bresi, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-36. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval and minor subdivision approval with required variances for the construction of a house of worship for BM OJ, Inc., block 6401, lots 21 and 22. Eligible to vote are Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Riker, Ms. Rose, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve?
Second, Heller.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
And the last one is resolution number 2024-37. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with required variances and design waivers for the conversion of a residential dwelling to a house of worship for Kahila Brookwood 4, block 6002, lots 2, 3, and part of 1. Eligible to vote are Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve?
Second, Sullivan.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
We have some changes to the agenda schedule. It's particularly important that the board pay attention to this. And the first two are because of the schedule for the township reorganization meeting having changed. January 6th, 2025 reorganization meeting is canceled. We had put that on the agenda previously. Reorganization meeting is rescheduled for January 13th, 2025. Block 13601, lots 12 and 13, Bees Madras Hope Chapel, Inc., is carried from tonight to November 18th, 2024 with no further notice required. Block 23001, lot 14, Shalva High School Phase 2 is carried from November 4th to December 16th, 2024 with notice required. Block 6501, lot 4202, My Address LLC is carried from December 16th, 2024 to January 13th, 2025 for scheduling purposes only. Do we need to approve that?
January 13th. I'm sorry. January 13th.
January 13th. Should we approve that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's have a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion, Sullivan.
Second, Marzo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we can just, the others, we can do as a group? Prove them as a group? All right, let's take a motion on approving those as a group, the changes.
I make a motion, Sullivan.
Second, Marzo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All right, that's approved. Okay. Master Plan Report, please, Mr. Marzo.
Good evening. The Master Plan Subcommittee has received its first draft of the master plan. The Subcommittee has reviewed and commented on the first half of the master plan and is in the process of completing its full review of the master plan at this time. We'll keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been nine months so far. We would have thought this maybe would have been delivered by now. All right. Before the normal agenda begins, I want to provide the following information to Planning Board members and the public. On October 15th, I received the following message from Council President Ms. Kuhn. Chairwoman Campbell, as Council President, I am formally requesting that ordinance 33-24, which passed with a 5-0 vote at the 10/11/2024 council meeting, be placed on your October 28th agenda for Planning Board recommendation regarding its consistency with the master plan. This is the usual procedure following the first reading of an ordinance related to land use. It would seem out of the ordinary to delay this manner, matter, so I kindly ask that this request be placed on your agenda 10/28/2024. Thank you for your attention to this. Should you have any further questions, please feel free to reach out. And I replied with the following the same, the next day. "Good day, Council President Kuhn. You sent me an email October 15th requesting the Planning Board place ordinance 33-24 on the agenda for October 28th. The Planning Board has a full schedule for that date and frankly, a full addendum through the remainder of the year. Additionally, we are reaching the completion of a new master plan, further encumbering our schedules. The Planning Board volunteer members are dedicated to serving the Jackson community and to cooperating with the Township Council and Mayor. This application crossed jurisdictional boundaries between the zoning and planning boards on numerous occasions and received multiple approval from both boards. The history of this project is extensive and complicated. Most of the present Planning Board were not members in 2021. They will need time to familiarize themselves with the history and factual circumstances of the project. Therefore, the Board will take advantage of the 35 days from October 15th allotted by Jackson Statute 40:55D-26A to review all necessary documentations, resolutions from the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as updates this Board and Council agreed upon in 2019 for the master plan review of the 2009 master plan. Two weeks is simply not sufficient time to accomplish this important task before placing the ordinance on the agenda. Within a few short months, the Master Board will provide the community and the Council with a new master plan, a framework that will outline a vision and direction for the next decade with recommendations for the Council relative to design of ordinances to support creative, intelligent growth." That's the end of the reply. Since the statute allows for 35-day review, that will conveniently bring us to November 18th, our second November meeting. In the meantime, at their 10/20 meeting, the Council tabled ordinance 3324. Since only three present Planning Board members reviewed the original relevant project testimony and voted on the resolutions, and the same three members were at the 2019 meeting when Mr. Peters presented us with the master plan review. In order for all members to prepare for the potential of placing the ordinance on our agenda dependent on Council actions, tonight after the meeting, Mr. Shea will provide members with pertinent documents. At the November 18th Planning Board meeting, we will hear our planner, Mr. Peters, recommendations regarding the township's ordinance's support of the 2009 master plan and the 2019 master plan review, and from Mr. Shea regarding our obligations. Then members will vote on the ordinance. Tonight, there will be no testimony nor public comments heard with regard to ordinance 3324. We will continue with our agenda items and hear testimony, questions, comments on only those two agenda items. If you're not interested in the regular meetings, we would request that you quietly are welcome to leave at this time, and we will return, we will continue with our regular meeting. All right. We'll now go to Mr. Alfieri.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri, and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. We were here in May and initially presented testimony. During the course of that testimony, several issues were raised. One was that Mr. Cleese sketched out a proposed parking lot. We weren't proposing a formal parking lot. And as a result of those comments, a new plan was submitted to the Board. And since that time, your Board professionals have issued new reports based upon the new plans. We also submitted a new traffic report dated July 9th, which was also incorporated into your professionals' reports. I don't know if you want to hear from them first, or we go right into it?
We can.
Just very quickly, Madam Chair.
At the May 6th hearing, the applicant agreed to file the Board's professional reports. We just asked that the applicant's team address the new professionals' reports as they relate to the amended layout. Thank you.
And then just one other preliminary comment. Also revealed at that May hearing was the fact that the applicant had performed some work within the building without permits. And we were told clearly, "Do not come back until you have the permits." I have copies of the permits here from electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and building, which I'm going to submit so that the record's clear, but he did obtain permits since the May hearing. Okay, we're going to start with our engineer. He was sworn in and qualified at the last hearing.
You swear or affirm that you tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Yehuda Bak, B-A-C-K, licensed professional engineer in good standing in the state of New Jersey.
The Board accepts your credentials?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and we...
Welcome back.
Thank you. We had submitted five exhibits, I believe, prior to the hearing. Six exhibits, I'm sorry. And Anthony, if you could start with the existing condition exhibit, which I think was marked A1 in the email that was sent.
Is there any way we can rotate it, or we can look at it like this, too? Perfect, thank you. So on the left side, that's our existing conditions and demo plan. On the right is the improvement plan. Not to go, I'll go over quick just what we're dealing with. The address is 14 Steuben Lane, block 7309, lot 7. On site is one-story, approximately 2,000-square-foot building. It's a framed dwelling, which is to be converted to an office. There's an in-ground pool in the back, which is proposed to be removed, and the shed, which is also proposed to be removed. Just to get your bearings, this is, on the right side is Oak Drive. On the bottom of the plan is Steuben Lane. Towards the top right is north. The site contains about 20,000 square feet. North and west of the site are residential homes, so that would be the opposing side of Oak Drive. And the top of the plan over here are both residential homes. To the south is an attorney's office, and on the other side of Steuben Lane is a strip mall. We are located in the HC zone, where business offices are listed as a permitted principal use, while single-family residential homes are not a permitted use. We're seeking minor site plan approval to convert the residential dwelling to a small office. No external improvements to the actual building, other than a proposed ADA-compliant handicap ramp and a trash enclosure are proposed. I can point that out. The handicap ramp will be running from the ADA-compliant space along the side of the deck, and then in front of that, this little square is the trash enclosure. A parking lot is proposed along the Oak Drive, along the Oak Drive frontage on the western portion of the site, standalone parking lot. Since the basement will be storage only, as we testified previously and are testifying again, nine spaces are required using one EV credit. Ten spaces are proposed, which include a van-accessible ADA space and an EV make-ready space. Anthony, can you pull up A4, please? It's just a picture of the Steuben Lane frontage. All the way on the bottom of the screen, you can see there's a little landscaping wall. A small portion of that wall actually encroaches onto the right-of-way. We are going to remove that portion that is within the right-of-way. Also proposed is a four-foot concrete sidewalk and curbing along both the Steuben and Oak Drive frontages. As was previously testified, there are four bulk variances required. All are existing conditions. Maximum corner lot of 45,000 square feet is required, whereas 20,000 is proposed. A minimum corner lot width of 200 feet is required, 100 is proposed. Minimum corner lot frontage, 200 feet is required, 100 is proposed. And lastly, a minimum front yard setback of 60 feet is required, whereas 21.91 feet is proposed. Again, all of these variances are existing conditions. There are three design waivers, which kind of are really one. They all apply to the trash enclosure. Firstly, the trash enclosure in the front yard. A trash enclosure is not allowed to be in the front yard. We are proposing it in the front yard because that is the best location for it with regard to the building and regard to their trash pickup. Secondly, a trash enclosure opening in direct view of Oak Drive. There will be a gate for this trash enclosure so that when it is closed, you cannot see the trash inside. And lastly, only two sides of the trash enclosure can be landscaped due to the handicap ramp behind it, and then the front of it is the gates, which can have landscaping in front of it. There are no environmental concerns associated with this application, and we will comply with any comments received from the local environmental commission. With regard to stormwater, Anthony, can you pull up A1 again, please? Thank you. "The site is considered minor development with regard to stormwater since there is less than a quarter acre increase of impervious surface and less than one acre of disturbance, which would mean that no stormwater management measures are required. Nonetheless, a storm system capable of storing and infiltrating the two- and 10-year storm events is proposed." And that's delineated on this plan with this shaded-in line on the corner, bottom-left corner of the parking lot. For utilities, the existing site is serviced, currently serviced with well water and a septic system, both of which are to remain. For lighting, the parking lot will be lit with one pole-mounted light, which is shown over here. The light can be timed to go off if there are unanticipated off-site lighting impacts. Per the Board Engineer's recommendation, the light has been placed on the west side of the parking lot and facing the building in order to avoid spillage to the neighboring properties. For landscaping, and for landscaping, there are, we require a buffer along the south side and the west side. There is an existing buffer along here. There's a lot of trees and brush there. A little bit lighter, but nonetheless, there is some trees on the west side. We will coordinate with the Board Professionals to ensure compliance with the landscaping requirements.
Okay, and the RV report, July 29th... Okay, and the RV report, July 29th, Owen Little report, July 22nd, and the fire officials' report. You've had an opportunity to review all three of those?
Yes.
And if the Board were to grant this approval, you would agree to satisfy the comments and conditions as a, as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay. And there was a colored rendering. I think it was A3. Anthony, could you just put up A3? I just, since we submitted it, we may as well see it. That's not helpful. That's grass. There you go. Okay, so the colored rendering, A3, is just generally describe what it depicts, the one on the right.
Okay, so you can see the building outlined in brown, the solid brown color. This, I don't know what color it is, orangish color is the deck. This is an existing walkway. This is the proposed handicap ramp leading to the parking lot. Again, the proposed parking lot, which is going to provide the nine spaces.
Thank you. That's all we have of the engineer, Madam Chair.
Comments, gentlemen? I know the Board has comments, but before I turn it over to you, Mr. Riker, may I just say, without belaboring the point, we've had to hear this twice. There's no reason we should have had to hear this twice. It should have been brought to us in this kind of condition the first time. As you know, we have a very full schedule, and to have to have spent time twice on this project, a small project for sure, but it, it takes time, and it's been quite distressing on our part. Mr. Riker?
Okay. Let's talk about the seven. Where is it?
Front, well, not front, bottom-left corner of the screen. It's over here.
How old?
Pretty old.
Okay.
It's a seepage pit, I believe.
And how many people work in that building?
The applicant will testify towards that.
Well, we, we have a statement of operations, and we do have to get Board of Health approval.
What are those, the managers of the business of the company?
Yes. Seven, well, it says the office will have seven employees.
Now we have nine parking places.
So, as usual, I take a ride out, and I was there five forty to two thirty-nine. And the term that I always use in construction is that it's a standing garage. And I'll start out with, this might not be in the hearing, but a walk along the fence with a pool. And it's garbage. It's nothing more than a lot of tall bottles that have been.
Trash.
Trash. And we took you guys to a professional office. I know what a professional office looks like with a wall back to it. This is the heel of a house with zero going into it, with the existing situation of a septic system that might work, and a swimming pool. And one of the sources of my not frustration, frustration, anger is this applicant's been using this property for about three years. I was there twice this summer. And there was a hell of a lot of children in that pool in the back. So I'm confused. Is it a house or is it an office? Because in my office, we didn't have a swimming pool, and we didn't have children. So who's using it as a swimming pool when it's a residential structure? Who's selling it to me as an office?
Well, it's, if this is approved, the-
No, no. All due respect, I mean, all due respect. This applicant thinks we're a box of mortals. How did we get so many children in the pool? Okay? And then with the fire department over there, I got a call from Mr. Grossman that the three gates are wide open. You can walk right into the backyard and go drown yourself. So I'm confused. Are we going to allow a legal operation and reward a legal operation with an approval? Or am I going to look at a house with a pool that has kids in it? And I haven't yet gotten permits, but I am furious that this applicant didn't have the wherewithal to send out a waiver for this meeting, clean up the place, which shows me he's not interested in anything more than a raise for him and a heck with everybody else. And I don't understand how we had all those children in the backyard in a pool when we're using it as an office. So where did they come from? So I'm going to look at this real hard. I'm not a happy camper. You're telling me the septic system is a seepage pit, welcome to 1950. What is our applicant going to do with that to bring it up to 2024, say, and decide to send it to the health department for a now?
So the health department does regulate according to-
Yes, when it fails, welcome to failure.
For a change-
You're doing very well here. System just failed.
For a change of views, which is what we're here for. We have to, we have to apply to the healthcare department, Osh County Healthcare Department, they review it.
If our client decides to buy it.
We have to get certification from them before, before we can-
If you don't, you know it's a fine house.
If it's in good condition, we can get it. It's a, it's, we're reducing the, the-
Did you look at that house?
I look at the house, yes.
Okay. So the windows are foggy. It's a dog of a house. It's not maintained. It's a house from the 50s. It's not an office building. You're trying to create an office building out of a house. Okay? A built boat, that's a house. That is a heel of a house that's in a residential neighborhood that you were trying to work into a commercial property. So you're telling me by bringing it into a commercial property, it's going to be very nice? I don't see very nice. I don't have those colored glasses on. So let's look at the nuts in the, in the bolts of this. What are we going to do with the seven besides apply to the Board of Health?
The Board of Health is the one that regulates and ensures that we are in compliance with 79A, which addresses all of your concerns of a seepage pit, so.
Okay. I speak very well. I'm a retired instructor. I'm tired of you. I ask you, what are we going to do with the system if I have to?
So there's two options. After the inspection, so if it's in, if it's in a bad condition, there's-
What you're telling me is you haven't inspected the system.
No, personally, no.
You're saying flushing is all good.
I have not inspected the system, no.
Okay, so nobody has taken a look at the system?
I don't-
Six months later, nobody's looked at it? You've done a lot of crap there in six months, other than straightened out your little eavescreen. You've been starting to-
Can the applicant-
You have to ask the applicant that.
Can the applicant testify as to the maximum amount of people that will be in that house? I know there's only, there's eight or nine parking spots, seven parking spots. So what, what is a maximum amount of people that will be there utilizing the septic system?
So I can give testimony on that. The, the use of a, of a septic system with regard to commercial use is way, way lighter than a residential home, always, whether it's because of washing machines, you know, trash disposal. It's way, way, way lighter, which does make it easier for us to apply to the health department, who then looks it over and ensures that the use is less than the previous use at a minimum. They also look it over to make sure that it's in functioning condition. They will, a septic installer will have to go down there and review it and provide a report that says that it's in compliance with the current standards, and if not, they'll have to bring it up to the current standards. If it's not possible, they'll have to replace it with an, an actual septic system, not a seepage pit. As you know, they, they can't do seepage pits anymore.
And, and to answer your question, the, the statement of operation says the office has seven employees. The employees alternate their time between the office and out of state. They are all not in the office at the same time during the week, but there are seven employees, so in theory, I guess it's possible that seven might be there at one time.
What about the worst case?
Okay, so there.
And what, will, will seven employees, but will any customers be?
From what, from what was testified last time, rarely does anyone visit, but we could have the applicant come up and supplement that testimony. But back to the original point, twofold, I have a response. Number one is, you're really supposed to look at the application before you. I understand that there may be things happening or have happened in the past that you're not happy with, but you're here to look at the application and whether it complies with the ordinances of the town, so I just want to keep that in mind. Secondly, it's not unusual to get the outside agency approvals after the Board approves an application. So the Board of Health and any other outside agency approvals we need to get would be the next step if the Board were to grant approval tonight, so.
I agree.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, not to agree with the applicant, but from my personal experience with septic system with expansions and, and building and stuff I had to go through, yes, I had to get clearance from them, and yes, it cost a lot of money to do what they wanted and increase. And it is an application process that is followed, that you have to get it from the Board of Health. And I understand this may or may not work. I'm not going to say it is or it's not, and if it doesn't, it can't be replaced the same way, but that has to come from the Board of Health. I definitely concur with that. Thank you.
Hey, may I ask a question? You did comply with something we had requested. You were going to leave the pool. Now you are removing the pool.
Removing the pool, yes.
When you remove a pool, it is not an easy process. How are, how are you going to go about that? What are you going to use as fill? And how are you going to be assured that there won't be compression? What kind of lot are you putting in there?
I, I only know how to, I don't even know how to vacuum a pool, never mind the answer to that question, but hopefully the engineer does.
I've done both, both. I've both put in a pool, which took tons of time, and been in a house where a pool was removed. And one of the problems that we had when the pool was removed is that there was compression and, and a divot in our, in our yard.
I understand, and whether it's a pool or any other structure that has to be excavated and then filled, I, the only suggestion I can have is that we would have to work with whomever is inspecting at the town to make sure whatever's installed is compacted properly and can withstand the paving for the parking lot, but that-
We, we have ordinances on the type of fill that can be used. It can't be just something from up the street. So I hope you're going to make sure that's in the resolution. Appropriate fill. You made, sir. Thank you.
Okay. You stop there. My, my frustration is, everybody stands up there and he's saying, "I swear," and I swear. We met on May 6th, and you're guy with quite a bit. And I would have thought that we've got a message with William. We decided we were going to entertain kids, and you have a pool and all that.
And trash.
We were trying to sell this project as an office. And apparently before we did for an application for us, if you could at least have a laborer out there and break and clean up the place, and he didn't. So you're going to get the bad neighbors. If we're going to sit here and go through all this, and you're going to tell us what you're going to do, it's going to be a great building, and then I go out there and it's just as much trash as if some county line room, well, guess what? You got a problem. Okay? I'm not worried about that pool. My pool doesn't live in my building. What I'm worried about is, how do we get you from a radical home from 1950 to an office building? You know, we, we deal with this point a bit, and I'll go back to another project, which was the, the, the Vol Town upon the Menace Road. Okay? They came and they promised us everything. That dog in the house has been sitting there, weeds up to my belt line, and never got any better. This one is in worse shape. Windows are frosted, drapes are up and down, garbage around it, but it's okay to go swimming. And I don't understand what this applicant believes, that this is a great idea. This is a home that you're using without the proper approvals, and the guy isn't smart enough to stop using it after all. Should have closed the pool. So why do we need a deck on back of this property if we're going to consider this?
Want to say-
If you want an office building, how do we make this look like an office building, or like an office building, make sure that we don't have to dig up the road or whatever to get a new septic field in there? How do we go about this?
Well, the, the deck, portion of it's for the handicap ramp, correct?
Yeah. And then the doors are above grade, so you need some sort of landing. The deck is pretty new. I was out there also. I, I guess I just missed it today. It was, it's pretty new. It seems a shame to take it out. I agree with you that removing the pool is absolutely necessary to make it look like a, an office building, act like an office building. The deck is towards the rear of the property. It's not, you don't see it from the street, really. You, you see a landing.
I'm aware of it. I have Google, I have paralyzed about the eight of it, and I'm six degrees, it's clearly over fast. Yeah. So how do we make this look and perform like an office building? Because when I walk into your office building, I'm still furious. I know I'm in an office building. I'm still looking at a house. And the equipment that are tied to this are residential, a seepage pit from 1950 summer. There's been no money put into this building to make it cool or act in that way.
Well, we, we have our architect here, and he could perhaps come up when he testified.
He's six months too late. Six months too late. He's, he's on my butt. Okay? Six months too late. What has he been doing for six months? He honestly didn't read back with, you know, the testimony, you know, our frustration.
Well, the, I can't comment on the property maintenance, because, but-
But just tell me, it is part and parcel. If, if you want to make an improvement to the community, is it not reasonable to expect a year to maintain what you have? We have denied other applications because they just can't get it right, and they're quote-unquote a bad neighbor. How do I know that this gentleman is not a bad neighbor if he can't have somebody come by, huck the weeds down, break up the bottles and whatnot? He's got a tractor dukes on, outside the fence, and all he cares about is pulling six cars in, going in and getting his bucket of water. That's not a, that's not a business owner, in my opinion. I could be wrong, I could be biased, but that is not a business owner.
In, in response to your second point, the intention was to leave the structure so it looks like a house, even though it could function as an office. That was the intention. Even though it's a commercial zone, it's near residences, they, he felt that that was a better design or view. Obviously, you have a different opinion.
I thought we mentioned May 6th. Maybe I'm wrong. Oh, or, or-
We did, on May 6th, you definitely mentioned property maintenance. That, there's no doubt.
And-
Appearance.
So-
How about some assurance that, that it will be cl-
If you can't pull it off in six months, it's not going to get better than the-
Well, let's hope for the best. How, how about some assurance?
Well, the only assurance we could possibly give is a temporary CO, that, and you would not get a permanent until certain standards are met. Beyond that-
Sounds like a good idea.
Would the applicant be open to, before the CO, to a, a site inspection?
I have to, I have to look at the applicant.
As part of the-
Yes.
All right. We can work out the-
And you could designate whomever at the town as the, whether it's Doug or the construction official.
Right.
And we also, the other alternative is, when you get back to that photograph, is to, is to improve the landscaping up front so that it looks more presentable. And I know that the engineer did say there were landscape comments.
Very overgrown and, you know, very overgrown.
And there were landscape comments that we received that we would comply with as Beyond that, I understand your frustration, and we played, we play the cards we're dealt sometimes, so we're trying to make what we think a commercial use in a commercial zone is the appropriate use. It's just a function of getting it to the condition that you're comfortable with.
You know, you're between a rock and a hard place there. You've got commercial on some sides of the building, and you have homes on the other side. All the neighbors would like to think that you're going to be a good neighbor and, and have a decent-looking facility there. And it, right now, it is not a decent-looking facility. It's just not. And it's- And it's not right to come here and ask us to approve something that we think is an eyesore. It was an eyesore before, it's been being used illegally, and it continues to be an And it's also, as Mr. Riker points out, it's a danger with that pool. So please make sure that pool is secured. Gates should be closed, if there's a pool there. Gates should be closed. It's just not right. There's a neighborhood there with a ton of kids, and, you know, you can't watch them all the time. So please, let's make sure that that property is secure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. DeMarza.
Can you point out where the trash enclosure is going to be, please?
We can point it out on this, or Anthony, if you want to pull up A1, it's a little clearer, please. Can you see it on this? Marked with the X.
You have a picture of the building, I guess there was a picture of it when you were showing us the wall. Can you just bring that up and show me where that would be?
Sure. Anthony, it's A4.
Yes.
You can't see it from this picture? Anthony, scroll down, let's see if there's another. Not this either. This is pretty nice landscaping. Oh, okay, so it's on this side. It would be about right here. Well, after we take out this fence, it would be about there.
And what is it going to look like exactly? It's not going to just have like the garbage right there. It's going to actually be a.
No, no. An enclosure, proper enclosure.
Enclosed?
Yeah, as per the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Have another.
Yes.
Another person that's going to have the joy of testifying?
Yes. This one will probably be less painful because it's traffic. It's Scott Kennel and.
Oh, Mr. Kennel, that, yes, we're. And we have an architect, I believe.
Yes.
And we have an owner.
And we have a planner.
You're just full of people.
We have a lot of people.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Scott Kennel, K E N E L, McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Nantis Park.
You sleep here, right?
Welcome.
And Scott, you've testified as a professional.
Just a few times.
As a traffic expert in the past.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. So I know, and you did a report most recently in July of this year. Can you just summarize what you did to produce the report and what your conclusions were?
Yes. I mean, the report is qualified as a traffic statement where we provided traffic projections where this type of use would generate approximately five peak hour trips. We also did traffic counts on Oak and Stewart Lane. Oak Avenue, Oak, has traffic volumes in the range of 80 to 85 vehicles, two-way during the morning and afternoon peak hours. Generally speaking, it's a low-volume roadway for a commercial use. Parking lots been designed to accommodate, like I said, 10 parking spaces, and the driveway location will provide adequate sightlines. So in my opinion, the access can operate safely and efficiently. And again, as I stated, it's a low-volume traffic generator.
Any questions from the board? Mr. DeMarza.
I'm sorry, you said 10 parking spaces, or is it seven?
There are seven employees, there are 10 parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Gentlemen. Thank you. Good to go. Thank you.
Architect. You want to come up? We'll bring the owner up.
That'd be fine. Thank you. Good evening, sir. We're going to ask you to take a note. Thank you.
Wait.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Wrong hand.
Wrong hand.
All right, please state your name and spell your last with a record.
Shranga Shore, S C H O R R.
Check the microphone to see if it is on.
Shranga Shore, S C H O R R.
And Mr. Shore, you testified at the last hearing, correct?
Yes.
And you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
So I guess to address Mr. Riker's comment head-on, the pool apparently had a lot of kids in it this summer. Where are these kids from?
I don't know if they had a lot of kids. My kids, on a Sunday, occasionally go swimming there.
And you obviously understa, has the pool been closed now?
Yes.
All right. And is the gate going to be closed so that no one could sneak in and try and get into it?
Yes, it's typically closed, yeah.
You also heard comments, obviously the pool will be removed as a condition of approval.
Yes.
You also understand that if the, if the septic system, if you will, that's currently in existence, if for some reason that needs to be upgraded or removed and a new system installed, you'd have to comply with whatever the Board of Health requires?
Yes.
You also heard me say that there are seven employees, but they're all not on-site at the same time. Is that accurate?
That's typically the case.
What about visitors? Do you get visitors?
No, not many.
And you get deliveries, normal UPS-type trucks, FedEx?
Occasionally get a fax, yeah.
Okay. And then you heard the concerns and comments about property maintenance. Do you have a comment or a response?
We typically try to keep property maintenance. That picture, I think, on that side of the building is good. The other picture, seemingly, there was not much there, so.
But you, I heard there was trash and other things against the fence, apparently?
We typically try to keep it clean, yeah.
And you heard the comments about a good neighbor?
Yes.
And you understand what that means?
Yes.
If the board were to grant this approval and condition it upon proper maintenance at the time of a CO, and also cleaning up or supplementing the landscaping at the front of the building, you would agree to cooperate?
Yes.
He's all yours.
Thank you. Anyone from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I want to ask you, you're witness of warrants, but I'm not sure how to phrase it correctly.
He's here because he wants to legitimize something that already goes on, he wants to put an addition. Because he wants to do that, he's got to take out the pool, take out the shed, build a parking lot, do improvements. What timeframe to start this? How long will it take to be finished? What's the expectation for the board and the public this project will be undertaken and completed?
Whatever it is the board won't.
Well, assuming you were given approval tonight and all the conditions are met, Board of Health, et cetera, by the end of the year, how fast will you begin the cleanup and construction that's required to meet the conditions?
I think you said last time, immediately after our period of approval.
And how long will it take you to finish the work?
I would have to consult with a contractor, but we would prepare that contract prior to the time to start, so we would be hit the ground running and start right away.
So, weather permitting, could we stipulate that we'll commence the work within 60 days of the resolution compliance? Is that something that everyone thinks is reasonable?
That sounds good. I know I will drive by, I know Mr. Riker will be driving by, so we'd expect to see something within 60 days. We'd expect to see some activity.
Sure.
Madam Chair, could we start with the pool?
Yes. Well.
The triggering date would be from the beginning of resolution compliance.
Yeah. So you'll agree that the first thing you'll undertake during construction is to fill that pool in. Obviously, you have to meet all the ordinance standards for compaction, et cetera, but you'll do that as the first event?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As far as the removal of the pool, they could pull a demo permit on that today. There's no read for resolution compliance to get the map signed and everything along those lines, which he'll need to do, but there's no reason why he can't take the pool out today or tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm concerned, Madam Chair, is that the applicant gets approval, and respect that although the gentleman chooses not to do anything, he still has sort of, I don't know, it's in a wild, it's in a zone of code violation trap, so he gets approval not to do anything, and he has to, he has to solve.
We could fill that, whatever.
I'm concerned in the board. I think some affirmative performance might be necessary. Because how we're trying to get there, and I think the board members and the contractors who made or are great, you start, please understand, if someone comes in, they say they're going to do the project, they don't have to do it. You like to try to get some important standard to express, warn the residents' concerns in the current conditions.
So, yeah, and Mr. Cle makes a good point. We don't need resolution compliance to fill that pool in, so he'll start that within 30 days.
Okay. We have a 30-day agreement.
Yeah. Because he has to, I think he, we don't know if he needs a building permit to do that. We're going to have to figure out what.
I think that's his bonding requirements, correct?
30 days to start construction, or 30 days to apply for a permit.
All right, please still apply, like I said, since I'm a gentleman, I can really not, I'm a building contractor. If you're smart, we do it for this year, for this building. You can do it at any time. It's like 24 times. Go to the dining, go to the building, and then you go do your work, and get your progress respected, file, close, you're done, go see the tax office, go get your credit. So that's not a grievance here. You show up here or trying to figure out a method that we're going to manage it. You're not going to manage it, and as the resident Jackson's house, I'm offended that you're going to think of going to the building department to watch your trash. That's code enforcement. You have personal accountability, you own the property, you pay taxes, you operate the operation. It's your problem. Nobody else's. We're not going to watch it. What I'd like to see is if you're going to, we make you put up a bond for it. This way you got a little meeting day. You have had this ambiguity on this project. You're telling your children some type of rule. You got a lot of young children. I'm happy for you. I was born in a night, but it wasn't last night. And you came here, we corrected you, we warned you, and you did it again. I went there twice, and I saw what was going on. The front of that place should be as nice as the backyard with the wonderful red umbrellas, the sandbox, and everything else. You care more about doing what's good for you than being a good neighbor, in a good neighborhood, in a good township. Okay? Let's talk about how we're going to make this 1950s home look like an office building. What are we going to do to make it presentable? Between the store doors that are original, the frosted windows, having drapes up and down, it's like a rental. What are we going to do to make this look like a professional office building, and operate like a professional office building, besides the trash enclosure and the dry water? What are we going to do? We discussed this on May 6th, and we're not seeing anything here.
With all due respect, Madam Chairwoman had mentioned at the time about landscaping. I think if you can give me the other picture, we have, we had landscaping, we have it, and I think it's presentable.
Okay, let's stop. I'm talking about the structure. The structure. The domicile that is a home that you would like to have as a commercial office building. I'm not interested in any landscape. I'm interested in what we're going to do to bring the structure into a commercial building. Because when you showed me the pictures, I see shades up and down, I see stuff in the gutters, I live by it every day, its garden's all replaced. It's like the guy in the shop, he's out across the street, probably good, he's back enough for this. So what are you going to do? What are you proposing to put forward to make this look like a office building and not something that was left in 1950 when you built the commercial car? This is going on since May 6th.
Would the applicant be amendable to a monthly cleaning service, a third-party landscaper, somebody to clean up the premises as a commercial entity?
Yeah.
That be fair?
Yeah.
But the question.
Bi-weekly, maybe, something to that effect?
Yeah, that's fine.
But why are we having this many projects? Okay?
A few.
Okay. This is the best we got. If you bring it up to it, we're even instead of a lot. Seriously. You know, if you drive around Jackson's house, we're carrying down buildings, and the people that are coming here to invest are building wonderful architecture, attractive buildings. Okay? I understand you have a small arsenal, you work in screen. I don't expect you to build a major future ability with wonderful followers and power, but there has to be a way to make this look more like a commercial building.
So I guess the answer to your question is that he's not proposing to put new windows or doors in, he's willing to clean up the outside and put the landscaping, but it looks like a house.
It's six months and hasn't done nothing.
It's different. I keep.
His primary focus in six months was having an enjoyable summer in the backyard. I saw it. It was nicely matched here back there, red umbrellas, the sandbox, children in the pool. I'm frustrated, I'm angry. You come here, you raise your white hand, you swear you were firm, you were here on the sticks, and there's no significant change. And the only one who's dead who cares about this, looks like he's made it there, okay? You're not willing to address the septic system that invented 1950 summer. That's only as a change except for addition on the project since it was constructed. And yet you come here and you want some.
So the answer to what the applicant's.
I think we got, we got two issues going on. One, I believe the trash, the landscaping, the applicant has agreed to take.
That's not an issue.
Right. So we can, that's stipulated, that's a condition now, all right. Second one would be, I know I'm kind of jumping the gun here, but we haven't got to the architectials yet, but is the applicant willing to redo the architectials so that it adequately represents a commercial building?
The intent was to leave the exterior the way it is, which is a house next to a residential development. There was no intention to replace the windows, re-site it, or any of that.
Is there anything that the architect can do, just freshen it up, give it a fresher look? I understand keeping it as a residential look. I have no problem with that. You're not trying to build a little big warehouse in front of the other houses. Well, I'd like to hear from the architect, what are you going to do, just spruce it up, new doors, maybe fix the windows, or whatever they have to do. As far as the septic system not being redone, I think this is a good thing, you're getting change of use, and it's going to have to be redone by the Board of Health. So whatever's complied, you're going to have to comply with. I think the septic systems are done issue for me, because it's going to have to comply with the compliance of the Board of Health. I would like to hear from the architect what he can do to spruce it up a little, make it a little better. I don't know exactly what's wrong with the house, what they can do to fix it. That's what I'm waiting to hear.
We could bring the architect up. I'm not sure if he's prepared to answer that, but we can see. I don't know if he's spoken to the owner about that issue at all, because the intent was to leave it as it is, other than the landscaping.
You can talk to your owner here tonight.
Yep. I agree.
Madam Chair, can we go to the 10 minutes?
All right. We'll give it 10 minutes and have some conversations and come back. A 10-minute clock on us for that. Anthony, please. Ten-minute clock on us for that. Anthony, please.
Thank you.
I swear in the architect's.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Navtali Gutt, G-U-T. I'm our licensed architect, New Jersey and multiple other states. I'm principal of Gut Van LLC, architectural firm in Lakewood. These drawings, if we need them, were prepared under my supervision.
And you're familiar with the property?
Yes, I am.
So you've heard, I guess, obviously, the most important comment or question that we have is, what can you suggest for the board to consider to spruce up the building? We've already stipulated that landscaping will be addressed to the satisfaction of the board professionals. The building itself, what can you offer?
Right, so I would like to reiterate that the game plan was to keep this, the basic aesthetics the way they were. It happens to be a very charming house, in my opinion. The landscaping is also very charming. It's not typical, just grass. There's actually a lot of character to it. The issue is maintenance, does need maintenance, and garbage, which I would think that once the pool is out, I feel like the garbage and the mess is coming from the dual use, using the pool as like a side thing, which-
Stop. This, for sure, just testified it was his grandchildren.
Correct.
Children, minors.
Correct.
My statement was bottles of alcohol. Advocate from minors drinking alcohol has a main issue related to a pool.
The alcohol-
There are many airplane bottles all over the side of the property. You have not gone alcoholic at it. You're here belishing us, telling us that it's related to the pool. Go. Okay? Go.
So-
He just testified that it was his grandchildren. You're telling us it's used in the pool.
I honestly-
Okay? Stop. We have an inherent problem here with, I swear, okay, when he comes back, the first question I'm going to ask him is if he read it before. And I'm going to swear again and again to get that answer. Okay? The use of the pool has nothing to do with the garbage. The garbage has to do with maintaining the property, which has nothing to do with architectural work. Okay? Nothing to do with architectural. So let's go back to the structure and we'll have a conversation about the structure because we're already done with the operations.
So-
Okay? So let's talk structure. What are we going to do with the structure? What would you suggest as a licensed professional architect that has seen this structure, what ideas could you come up with to beautify this structure, to make it a little bit more pleasant other than the operation? Because I've addressed that with that.
Okay, just to clarify, I'm arguing, I'm just suggesting that a lot of the-
I don't need you to- Okay, this is the quasi judicial pattern. It's fact. It's black or white. It's pregnant or not. The gray area is just fooling around. You're fooling around. Let's talk about the structure. Are we clear?
Okay.
So you were, you commented about that you felt that the structure was attractive and not inconsistent with the homes. Also, there's an office building next door that's not the most modern or attractive building.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So the question is, there's obviously concerns about the look of the structure. What can we do to soften that?
Okay, so we had just had the discussion, and the owner is open to repainting it, cleaning up, new window treatment, neat, and cleaning up the landscaping, scheduled maintenance on the landscaping to make sure that the property does look neat and maintains the professional office look, that it deserves wall maintaining the residential aesthetics that it has lending into the neighborhood.
So to summarize, as it relates solely to the structure, painting the building and new window treatments.
Correct.
Correct? The doors and the windows are functional, so they-
They're functional, it just needs to be cleaned up with new window treatment.
I have a question on what you're considering window treatment. Are all the glasses clear? Is the whole glass-
The windows are in fine shape. They just, the window shades are paper window shades, so they would be upgraded to a nice shade, a nice permanent type of shade.
And the outside, you paint?
Yes.
The client is open to repainting.
And all the trimming stuff would be done, right?
Yes.
Again, the style of the house is-
It would look like the other houses in the neighborhood then, some of the old houses.
It will still maintain its residential look, but it will need neat and clean.
Thank you.
Right, so a neighborhood scheme, it'd look similar to the neighborhood scheme, just like a new home.
Or a cleaned up home.
A cleaned up home.
Again, it is in a residential area, and it's not, it's not, it's not necessary to scream that I'm a-
They're going to beautify it in accordance with neighborhood scheme.
In my opinion, it looks better than the lawyer's office next door, but the lawyer's office is just cleaner. I'm not recalling now what it is, but-
Okay, but you just updated it.
Okay.
You might take a look.
You're not getting it, okay? So one of the, one of the fronts, this is one of the things that I see. When I drive down County Line Road, oh, I think it's both nice, even, modern, consistent. So when I turn on that lane, I see the dentist's office. It looks like a dental office. Notice I'm using the word office. You keep vacillating over towards it's a residential home. You are not using it as a residential home. You've been legally using it. It's an office for four years.
But he hasn't said it's a residential home. He's saying residential character because it's near the homes. That's what they're trying to maintain. So, look, that's what we're willing to offer. We think it's an improvement, certainly over what's there. He's not going to rebuild the building.
I cannot understand why six months ago, instead of either message.
We could keep going back if you want to spend the whole night doing that.
Well, I think we could just stop the application and ask it to respectfully withdraw because you talked-
No, we're prepared to finish it tonight.
Mr. Riker, Mr. Alferi, I think we've made the point. We belabored it. We beat it with a hammer and then beat it with an excavator on top of that. So if this is the offer being presented by the applicant, so we don't go round and round and round in circles again, why doesn't the board make a decision as to whether or not this is acceptable? So that we don't have another hour's worth of testimony and then get back to the same place where we're at right now? That would be my recommendation. So the offer on the table is to have biweekly cleaning services. They're going to beautify the building to be within a neighborhood scheme with new paint, new window treatments, and if the applicant would be willing to defog the windows, you know, so that the windows at least look, look new, you know, window treatment, something like that, that would be my recommendation. Is that the offer on the table from the applicant?
I don't know anything about defogging windows, so again, I have to defer to-
I think it's a demineralizing process, but I don't know what kind of windows you have, so I'm just kind of putting it out there.
Old with the broken seals.
Okay.
It seems to me, I think they're triple glazed and they're broken seals. That's, that's why you get that foggy window look. There's, there's vapor between the panes.
Could be. I just, all we could clean the windows to the extent, I don't know how else to answer that.
Madam Chair, as far as the architecturals go, will we be getting new architectural drawings that show the new windows, that show the painting?
Typically, a window treatment is not something that's shown in the architectural plans unless we're redoing the windows. We're proposing the windows stay. They just, window treatment and any fogging that's present will be cleaned up.
I think you could provide exterior pictures that would show that the property, the structure has been painted and the trim has been painted and cleaned up. You could provide that.
Yeah, we could provide that.
Mr. Peters, what do you think? Mr. Cle, what do you think?
I'd still like to see what's proposed on the drawing, so everybody knows what we're going to get. I guess you could put a bond up for the improvements to the structure that only gets released once the board is satisfied with the way it looks without-
Can we do that?
The issue is quite longer than time than that. We have bonds in place for performance on projects all the time. The issue is the reluctance to maintain the progress. And I would agree that the bonds normally work when you finish a project and pull off and make that declaration done and put money back. But I think what the issue is here is an operational issue. And I would ask the board attorneys, if it's out of bounds, to ask for a bond for operational purposes, you know, for two years, so that if we do not see the improvement and a commitment that's in the residential compliance, that we have recourse.
I think we're kind of skirting what we're allowed to do here, guys. I think we, we have, so legally, you can request prorata share contributions as to, as to requesting a bond for estimates that we don't know. I mean, we can, we can request that the applicant work with Mr. Cle as to determine what evaluation the bond would be, and if they're willing to do it, that would be acceptable. But, I mean, you need, you need some kind of business proposals. You need some, something to verify what the bond that we're putting into effect would be, and even then, most performance bonds comes at the point of construction.
Right.
Which is, which is two steps further than we go.
We are.
Yeah, and the problem is municipal land use law, that you don't bond for onsite improvements.
Right.
It's only offsites. So I understand the suggestion, but I don't know how we would even accomplish something like that. And it's so subjective.
My contention here is, I'm listening to this young man. We're talking about windows that are frosted over. This gentleman is talking about, let's decorate the windows and new window treatments up inside. But they gave you to address the windows themselves. So we go round and round, and you say house, I say home. And the reality is, I'm going to iron it out again. Mr. Cle mentioned windows. Well, those windows are nice. Thank you. I would appreciate it all at the same, and it did look like a house on the back of a road. But my comments to the board and to the applicant is, your windows are frosted. Madam Chair has said, well, there may be needs to minimalization. Heard some words of the glass frosted, the triple pane probably failed, which is, of course, the reality, but I'm not being paid to consult on glass, nor is anybody here. We're saying, would you do the right thing? And then this gentleman comes back and says, well, we'll address the windows. Apparently, he's on a really short leash about what he can and can't do due to reluctance of the property owner. So then that brings us into, well, how do we get the property owner to do the right thing at the right time? He failed a six-month passage, and we're sitting here aggravating one another. So I don't know how to get this property owner to do the right thing. And quite honestly, I'm not his property manager. I don't want to be his property manager. I don't want Jackson Townsend to be his property manager. I don't think we should take the code enforcement to go over there and nudge him a little. And it certainly doesn't belong in zoning, and it certainly doesn't belong in construction department. They have a lot of-
Right, and I've just-
So it becomes now a personal responsibility.
Okay, so if we're-
And you can't legislate personal responsibility.
Or accept permissible rubives and not maintain the property.
And there's no, all we're here to do is comply with the ordinance. That's what we're trying to do.
Right. Would the applicant be willing to stipulate the hiring some kind of a window restoring service to bring it, is that-
I don't know.
Mr. Riker, would that, would that satisfy?
It's a blank, it's a blank check that he's not prepared to write. I don't, we don't know what that means. Does it mean we're going to have to rip out the entire structures of the building to put new windows in because somebody says-
It's taken out of that, Rick, if you own a building and it breaks, that plumbing will fail, the electrical will fail. It isn't-
And you repair it.
Is the same thing in your domicile as it is in mine. Same thing if you own a building or I have a shop. This is the risk of-
But there's a difference, there's a difference between aesthetics and function. If the plumbing breaks, you fix it. If you don't like the window, that doesn't mean-
I will finish your sentence. So the building code is the minimum standard. That's what the building code is.
It is.
The very least you can do to get by. That is our applicant, in my personal opinion. He will do the very least to get by to trust, secure, and approval. That is my statement on his intention on being a business owner of Jackson Townsend in 2024. He will do the very least that he can possibly do.
First of all, we believe the building, he believes in the architect believes the building, as it is, is fine. You don't like it, so it's a, it's-
It's not that I don't like it. It has nothing to do with I like or don't like it. I'm looking at the performance of the building for the use of the building and for the fit and character of what's going on. You're telling me you want to put a commercial enterprise in the corner of a residential neighborhood.
In the commercial zone.
All right, I think we're belaboring the point, guys. We're going in circles again, which I didn't want to do. So would the applicant be amenable to some kind of window treatment to make Mr. Riker happy?
Again, I, window treatments, we've agreed to, but you're talking about potentially replacing windows.
I'm not talking about replacing windows. I'm talking about a window restoration that doesn't encompass the complete-
I don't know if you do-
Well, we could, we could look, look more closely what the problem is, what's causing that frosting, and if it's, if it's a defect in the windows that could be replaced, and if it's not, if it's just cleaning up, or it's too much humidity in the building, and that could be addressed, whatever it takes to get those windows to look right. I don't-
Okay, and the applicant will be willing to stipulate to that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. All right, we have any other, any other topics that we got to add?
We just have to bring the planner up.
We have the planner, correct, yeah.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay. Off to the races. All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, please state your name and spell your last to the record.
Sure. Ian Borden, president of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey, licensed professional planner, New State, New Jersey.
And your qualifications have been accepted many times as a planner here, I assume?
Welcome back.
Just a few times.
Rumor has it.
Rumor has it you've been here.
So Ian, we usually call planner up for devariance relief, but tonight, we simply have c-variance relief.
Yes.
All related to the undersized lot nature of this application. Can you just describe the variances and place appropriate proofs on the record, please?
Yes, good evening. So the board has heard, obviously, testing over multiple evenings, the property is an undersized lot in the highway commercial zone. It has, it's undersized with lot area with 20,000 square foot existing where 45,000 square feet is required in the highway commercial zone. The lot frontage and width, or width and, width and frontage are 100 feet each where 175 is required. So that makes a lot undersized in the highway commercial zone. It is an existing lot that has existed for many years. It is a self, not a, not a self-created hardship, so this is a classic example of a hardship or C1 variance, whereby virtue of exceptional shape of the property, those variances are existing. And I believe they're, they are qualified as a C1 as an existing condition, certainly not exacerbated or affected by the applicant's proposal. I would also buttress the record additionally with the fact that even though we're, we do qualify for a C1, the C2 also does apply in this case as a benefits versus detriments because the property is being brought into conformance with the zone plan and master plan by converting a residential use to a commercial use. Additionally, the property is, has a redevelopment of an existing home into the office. Even by adding those parking spaces, has an impervious coverage of only 42 percent where 75 percent is permitted, and the building coverage is only 11 percent where 35 percent is permitted. So even though the lot is undersized by its existing nature, it's well within, substantially within the maximum development capacities in the highway commercial zone. And lastly, there is a minimum front setback variance to Steuben, which is 21.9 feet, as well as 29 feet to Oak Drive, which is less than the ordinance standard of 60 feet. But again, that is an existing condition, and the, the C1 variance criteria would apply, and in my opinion, is met in this case.
So we have Mr. Borden.
Mr. Peters, any comments?
No exception to Mr. Borden's special line of worries and variances for the question.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, Madam Chair.
Not my design. I think it's an appropriate design. I would add on the septic. I ran through the numbers while I was back there. The existing single-family house at four bedrooms, if it's four bedrooms, will be 650 gallons per day. A 2,000 square foot office is 250 gallons per day. So the septic flows are substantially reduced. It does need approval from the Board of Health. I think there's a good chance the Board of Health will require a standard bed. They will not allow the seepage pit, in my opinion, but, but simply, that's an outside agency approval, and I agree with the engineer's testimony in that case.
And the applicant's fully aware that if-
Just, just add some environmental spin to that as well, while I was here.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Questions or concerns? How about a motion?
No.
No.
Oh, I'm very sorry. I, I will invite the public, if anyone has any comments about this piece of property. Questions for the experts first, please.
Any cross-examination questions?
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public testimony.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Could I just do a quick summary?
Please.
Sorry, I know we took a lot more of the time than we expected. So I just, first of all, I want to caution or remind the board that we're here to review the application based upon the ordinances that the town has. I understand Mr. Riker's upset, and many of the other board members may be upset, but we need to focus on the ordinance. Secondly, we obviously have to go to the Board of Health, as Mr. Borden and our engineer indicated. That septic system, if you will, has to comply with the regulations. That's an outside agency that approval that the applicant will have to obtain. We agreed to fill the pool in. We discussed that the applicant will apply for the pool demolition permit, for lack of a better term, within 60 days of tonight, not the resolution, but from tonight. So, because he has to line up a contractor, get a proposal, prepare the application, apply for a permit. We'll also diligently pursue the closing of that pool once the permit's issued. We've agreed to work with the town on the cleanup of the property as it relates to landscaping, obviously, property maintenance. We're going to paint the building window treat, new window treatments, and the architect indicated they would work on the solution to the defogging of the windows. The biweekly cleaning, we have no issues with as far as property maintenance is concerned. Otherwise, I mean, it's a permitted use in the zone. The variances are all pre-existing, and we really think that you've essentially cleaned up the property to the best extent that you can, and we requested the board grant the approval subject to those conditions or any other conditions. Obviously, we agreed to address all the technical comments within the reports as well. So there are no open technical issues with your professionals. Thank you.
Now, we will request a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, ma'am. There's a lot to look at here, and I think maybe, I'm old school, maybe too old school. What I've been taught that you can't look at everything of what's existing. You have to look at the application of what you're looking at, the application in use, and going forward from that point. I understand the owner may not have taken care of it and so forth, and should have maybe better cared for for some reason or another. That's not part of the next application. The pool being filled in and being used as a rental or whatever in the past, whatever it is, doesn't make a difference because it's being filled in. The septic, I think it's a blessing that we're changing the use, and it will be looked at from the Board of Health, which should probably require a new system. And I think that's a plus to the whole neighborhood and the grounds around it. As far as keeping the residential look, I think that's a plus. I don't think the other people who want an office-looking building there, but if it could be neatened up like you submitted to doing, I think that's a good thing. It's, it's a tough application to look at. You complied with biweekly cleaning and so forth in the meantime. But once again, looking at it going forward, not what it's been for 40 years or whatever it's been, but here's the application and going forward. And if it's a code enforcement thing, at that point, it has to be code enforcement. With all that said, I make a motion to approve.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that motion. Heller?
We'll have a voice vote, please.
Mr. Bresi?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes, as long as all the conditions are met, yes, I agree.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
I will vote yes, with the understanding that this applicant will follow through and make that commitment. But I will issue the warning, if you don't, shame on you. You're the property owner. It's in your total control.
Okay, Ms. Rose?
Reluctantly, yes, but I would like to see him follow through.
Mr. Sullivan?
Fact is, we shouldn't have to have come back. We shouldn't have to beg for someone to bring their property up to minimum standards. The fact remains that we did. The fact remains that we've had to spend 75 minutes, excuse me, more than that, over 90 minutes on this application, when it should have been a fairly easy application if we had a cooperative applicant. Instead, we've had to bring this applicant into conformity kicking and screaming. With all that being said, shame on you if you don't come through on what you promised. I reluctantly vote yes.
Dr. Camp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Usually, I say congratulations, but I'm not in the mood. I'm just not in the mood. No congratulations from me tonight. Wasted, we wasted two nights on this. Two nights on this. I should have been, should have been a half an hour. We wasted two nights on this. Two nights on this. I should have been, should have been a half an hour. It's still being used.
Moving right along.
I was just about ready, but he backed off, so.
I promise we'll be nicer.
Pardon me?
I said, I promise we'll be nicer.
Oh, yes. I will be nicer, too, I promise that.
My name is Joseph Nicolini from Ali Sermon &amp; Nicolini. I represent Ten Forest Hill Avenue LLC. The, this is an application, site plan application for what is essentially a five-unit, each unit is 1,000 square-feet, building on County Line Road at the intersection of Forest Hill Avenue, which is a dead-end street, and County Line, North County Line, where it is four lanes, two in each direction. Currently, there is a, we're also proposing, in addition to the five units, each 1,000 square feet, there's 1,000 feet below each end unit for 2,000 additional square feet that will be storage only, and we will stipulate by way of a deed restriction so that it's not used otherwise. There are, there is currently a building that fronts on Forest Hill that is used by our client, Jose Angeles, for his painting business. He proposes to put his office in one of the end units, and on the other end, there's going to be a small little Mexican restaurant, and then the other three units will be in accordance with whatever he can rent it to, as is allowed in the commercial zone, the highway commercial zone. There are a couple of variances, they are all the result of, all pre-existing based on the size and the configuration of the site. So where 45,000 square feet is required, we have 42,444. Where lot width of 200 is required, we have 178.7 feet. Where lot frontage is required of 200 feet, we have 163.3 along Forest Hill. And where lot frontage, there's actually a paper street that backs up to the very corner, the back right corner of the property, and technically, you're supposed to have 200 feet frontage on that street, and we have 20 feet frontage on a paper street that'll probably never be built on, the testimony will show that. We do have parking for 40 spaces. There was an additional variance noted in the review letters that we were only 10 feet from the adjacent residential zone where 20 feet is required on Forest Hill. We are actually going to move the parking area, take away two spots, so that we are 20 feet, and then we're going to put in two EV spots, which we get credit for those two additional. So we still have 40 spots technically, but we're going to eliminate that variance that was either called out by Mr. Peters or Mr. Cleer, both of them. So the testimony tonight will be by John Buletza, who is a professional engineer and professional planner. We have David Feldman, architect, who did submit architectures on a PDF, but on Friday, I asked him to put them in color, so that's why we have something on a board here, which we'll have him testify to as well. And then we have Scott Kinnell, the traffic expert, and my client is available for questions. So with that, I'd like to have Mr. Buletza sworn in. Thank you.
Right. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Yes, John Buletza, B-U-L-E-T-Z-A, Nelson Engineering Associates. I'm a licensed engineer and a licensed professional planner in the state, as well as a certified maintenance engineer.
And have you, do you accept his qualifications, or would you like me...
What, except the credentials?
Yes, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, I've been here, this is my third time, every decade or so, first time 2002, then 2012, and now here again.
Mr. Buletza, would you kindly describe the application to the board, including the existing property, what's the proposed development is, the variances that are being requested, and all the site improvements?
If I could ask, Anthony, is it, can you put the site plan, sheet number two, the demolition plan up on the screen, please? That's the architectural, the other one, there you go. Sheet number two.
So is that, there you go, that's it.
Okay, so sheet number two is a demolition plan, and that's a picture of the existing property, what is there on the property now. Let me quickly go through what Joe just recapped. The existing property is located at the corner of Forest Hill Avenue.
And Forest Hill's a dead-end street, is it not? Oh, it's not a dead end. Okay, sorry, my fault, go ahead, I promised to be quiet.
It's okay, Joe. And North County Line Road, North County Line Road is divided highway, two lanes cross to the south on our side of the road, two lanes to the north. It's 102-foot right-of-way, I believe, that Forest Hill Avenue is a 50-foot right-of-way. The property zone is block 83.02, lot one. The total lot area is 42,444 square feet, 0.974 acres. Property is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone District. The lot is undersized for the zone, and variance conditions exist for the lot itself. There's four of them. The first one is that the lot area is 42,440 square feet, where 45,000 square feet is the minimum lot area required in the zone. The lot width is 178.7 feet, where 200 feet is required, the minimum required. The lot frontage along Forest Hill Avenue is 165.3 feet, where 200 feet is the minimum frontage required. And the lot frontage across Pine Crest Avenue is 20 feet. Pine Crest Avenue is a unimproved street which dead-ends into the southern line, lot line of the property. It's 40 feet right-of-way, and the lot frontage on Pine Crest Avenue on the property is 20 feet, where 200 feet is required. Lot frontage, by the way, along North County Line Road is conforming at 223.4 feet, where 200 feet is the minimum required. I would note that the two adjacent lots on either side of the subject property are both deficient with respect to street frontage and lot area. Towards the north, block 83.0, 8301, lot 1.01, has a lot area of 0.86 acres and a street frontage of approximately 64 feet on North County Line Road. And block 83.02, lot 2.01, to the south, has a lot area of 0.74 acres and a street frontage along Forest Hill Avenue of 160 feet. Once again, where 200 feet is the minimum required frontage in the HC zone. Now, getting to the existing, I'll give you a quick overview of the existing development on the property. The existing improvements include a one-story frame building, as you can see, with landings, steps, brick paver sidewalk, a paver pad, paver parking area, timber curb, planter, site ID sign, a wood sign, a chain link fence, three trailers, four sheds, and various asphalt, concrete, and gravel areas. Part of the site to the west is wooded, and there is a site triangle easement on the property at the intersection of Forest Hill Avenue. That's a standard, I believe, 30 by 100 Ocean County site triangle easement at the intersection. And there is also a Ocean County highway easement along majority of the frontage of the property, that's approximately 23 and a half feet wide. Now, there are also bulk variance conditions that exist for the current development on the property itself, for the development on the property. There are two of them. The first is the front setback is 38.5 feet to Forest Hill Avenue, where 60 feet is the minimum front setback required. And the side setback to the lot, to the south, is, exists at 19.1 feet, where 25 feet is the minimum required. Both of these bulk variances that are existing will be eliminated as a result of the project.
The project's going to demolish the existing structures on the site, correct?
All of the existing structures.
And thereby get rid of those variances which currently exist.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
And the new 5,000-square-foot building, it's a 50 by 100-foot building, will meet all of the bulk setbacks, front, side. Now, moving on to sheet three, please, Anthony. The next sheet, which is the construction plan, shows the geometric layout of the proposed improvements on the lot. As I said, the applicant seeking approval to construct a one-story, 5,000-square-foot commercial building, it's 5,000 square feet on the first floor. It includes a 1,000-square-foot restaurant at the southernmost unit, the, there's five units, they're 20 by 50 feet, each 1,000 square feet. The two end units, north and south, are proposed to also have a basement. The three units in the center portion of the building are crawl space or slab-on-grade.
And that basement will be utilized for storage, is that correct?
Yeah, the applicant has stipulated that the two basements will be used for storage.
And as indicated in my opening statement, if required, the applicant consents to a deed restriction as to that.
He has.
Okay, go ahead.
Say that one more time, Mr. Michelini?
Say, if the board required a deed restriction for the basement area to be utilized as storage, we would consent to that. I don't know that the board will require it, but if there's any concerns about it being used for something else, we would consent that it be used, because it impacts parking, really.
It'll run with the property, so.
What's that?
It'll run with the property, so, yeah.
Conservatives, as Mr. Michelini indicated, if someone wants to use it for something other than storage, it is not sufficient parking to sustain.
Right.
So if that's the reason you want to have some restriction, whether it be the land and with the building.
All right.
As to the basement only, we would utilize it for storage.
And the applicant's willing to...
Possibly some mechanicals, but mainly...
The applicant's willing to stipulate that.
The applicant will stipulate to that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And that being said, in Mr. Peters's letter, as for a quick explanation about the parking requirements, we had, taking a look at the southernmost unit, 1,000 square feet, the parking requirement is one space per 50 square feet, therefore, that one unit uses half of the spaces that you're looking at in the parking lot, 20 spaces are required as a restaurant in that space, and the other four units on the ground floor, the most restrictive parking requirements for permitted uses in the zone is one per 200 square feet. Those other four units, or the other 4,000 square feet in the building, would make up the other 20 parking spaces in the parking lot. That is how we designed the property. As far as the additional spaces that are required, I had originally used one space per 1,500 square feet for storage in the basement, thereby giving a parking requirement on the sheet one of my plan of 41 spaces. Mr. Peters pointed out that at one per 200 square feet for those basement units, it would be a total parking requirement of 50 spaces, once again, where 40 spaces are required.
What, but in...
I'm sorry, are provided.
In your opinion, though, if we agree to use the storage, the basement areas as storage, would that be adequate for the 40 spaces that are proposed?
Yes.
Okay. And I noted in my opening that we're going to eliminate two spaces so as to make the parking area 20 feet from the adjacent parcel on Forest Hill, instead of 10 feet, and, but in its place require two EV spaces. Would you explain that?
Sure thing. So looking at this plan, you're looking at 40 spaces on the ground, and by the way, two of the spaces are barrier-free spaces near the center portion of the building, one of them is van-accessible. The tree expert in her letter brought up a point that the adjacent property to the south is a residential use, which I may add is a non-permitted use in the highway commercial zone. However, to a residential use, the parking setback required in the development standards is 20 feet. The plan that you're looking at shows 10 feet. So what the applicant is proposing to do is remove the two southernmost spaces for a total of 38 spaces on the ground, and then add two make-ready electric vehicle charging stations somewhere on, in the parking lot, which will give him a credit for an extra two spaces, thereby bringing the total of the number of spaces provided to 40.
Two EV spaces, sir, would be away from the building, though? Two EV, two EV parking spots, that'd be the furthest from the building they could be.
Um...
That's what we want to see.
Yeah.
That's what you would like?
Yes.
Okay. So furthest from the building would be directly, I guess, adjacent to Forest Hill Avenue?
Correct.
And it would be the two southeastern parking spaces where the pointer is shown now.
Okay. And then we'll have 20 feet also from the adjoining residential neighbor, correct?
Yes, so by removing the two physical spaces, thereby we eliminate the variance that the tree expert pointed out, because the parking setback to a commercial use would only be 10 feet, but this provides that 20-foot parking setback to the residential use.
Okay. If you would go on for the rest of your testimony?
Various design waivers, as mentioned in the engineer and planner's letters, are also required, touching on some of them. But let me get into the site improvements now, once again, still referring to Plan Sheet Three, the construction plan. Starting at the two right-of-way, we have provided a 24-foot-wide, two-way drive aisle for egress, ingress and egress from North County Line Road into the property, and we're also providing a 24-foot-wide, two-way drive aisle for ingress and egress from Forest Hill Avenue. There is also a 24-foot-wide, two-way drive aisle throughout the parking area in the site. The parking area and the drive aisles are curbed, fully with concrete curb all around. In addition, there is a concrete apron at each of the, concrete apron to press curb at each of the entrances from the public right-of-way that go from the depressed curb up to the property line, approximately nine feet at North County Line Road, and seven feet perhaps at Forest Hill Avenue, from memory. The right-of-ways, we are proposing, there's no curb there now, the curb at County Line, there is a curb on North County Line Road, none on Forest Hill Avenue. We are proposing to curb fully the right-of-way of both streets along the entire frontage of the property with Ocean County Highway curb along North County Line Road, and municipal-type curb along Forest Hill Avenue.
Are you seeking a design waiver for sidewalks?
We are seeking a design waiver for sidewalks, but we're providing the curb.
And there's no sidewalks in the area on Forest Hill or on County Line in the area, correct?
Yes, that's correct. In addition, we have a four-foot sidewalk around the entire building, except... In addition, we have a four-foot sidewalk around the entire building, except along the front of the building. It's a seven-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalk, eight feet from the building to the face of the curb. We have a loading area, which is adjacent to the north part of the property, and it is in front of a twelve-by-eighteen-foot dumpster enclosure. The loading area measures at its smallest dimensions, approximately fifty-five feet by, long by twenty feet wide.
Will that be adequate to allow a vehicle to get in there and unload as necessary?
Yes, it will. If you will refer to, Anthony, please, sheet thirteen, last sheet on this PDF. It shows a turning movement that Ocean County Planning Board requested for the property, and it shows an SU thirty, single-unit vehicle coming in and then egressing the, the site. In addition, in answer to one of the comments in Mr. Peters' letter, he asked about fire truck movement and garbage truck movement. As I said, there's a free twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle through the property and into the property whereby a fire truck can come in from either street, go through the drive aisle in the property and exit out the other street. And a garbage truck, be it a, if it is a front loader, can drive straight in from North County Line Road, straight in, take the garbage, do a K-turn, and come back out of the property from either driveway.
And you have Ocean County Planning Board approval, correct?
Yes, we did submit this plan to Ocean County Planning Board.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I understand the fire apparatus at the front, is there any way to get it, where it can get to the back of the building also if needed? Where the garbage disposal of a garbage truck can fit in there, can that be fixed, where a garbage truck can get to at least a portion of the back of the building?
Well, a fire truck could pull up on the north side, up to the dumpster enclosure and spray the building. If he has height, it's a one-story building, he'd be able to spray down on the back of the building. And then a fire truck could come to the southern aisle and go past the rear of the building, and he could spray the building, the back of the building from that location.
Mr. Ryker, you'd be a little more familiar with me if that works or not.
All right. Just a little help, just keep me informed. The EV parking spots, I get it. The reason why Mr. Reston brought them up is that they were most, which will find when you get your fire technical review, they want to disconnect on the building, and they want the battery charge station as far away from the building as you can burn it, that's all. So that's the reason. So you're, you're applying, I understand your comments and all that. The, the next thing I want to touch on, as far as the basement, I do understand the applicant's willingness to proclaim a deed restriction, but at the same rate, I would say you'd want to put a little testimony on the record because the applicant seems to want to operate the restaurant. And I think that it would be an excellent idea to put some testimony on the record at some point, if you're a contractor, planner, whatever, so that your walking boxes are maybe located in the basement or your deeper storage rather than outside where we wouldn't like to see, but other people like to bargain with. So, let's talk fire. I'm one of the fire guys. During the review process, we're going to see comments that they want access to all sides of the building. So to solve this, they're going to want to get a truck behind the building. It's not so much to spray water, it's to get a engine in there to pump it. I don't know if you're going to be sprinkler or not, that'll get solved later on, but another review, not here. So what I would suggest, if it's possible, if we don't have enough plan out there that I can ruin the city.
Show them the other sheet.
Sheet, sheet three, please, Anthony.
I would suggest maybe a malleable curb. I'm assuming the back of the building is going to have some type of pavement a few feet off the building.
Mr...
Michael.
Sorry, I'm sorry that I didn't mention this. We had back and forth with Mr. O'Brien, and they issued a, they issued the fire, they issued approval from Bureau of Fire District Number Four on December first, twenty-twenty-three, for the plan that's here, that you're looking at.
Okay, so, Anthony, could you, could you pull it up a little bit further, give me the word, like, show me the back of the building, please?
He, he did make some comments. One was...
That's good.
He wanted a knockspock installed on the emergency access. He wanted identifying emblems for structures with truss construction and solar panels be placed on the building. He wanted to propose fire lane signage around the ground markings that were placed on the map that you may be able to see in yellow. And he wanted a bunch of fire lane no parking signs, which we have shown on the plan. And he, I showed him that there is a existing fire hydrant right here at the intersection of North County Line Road. But anyway, I will take your comments too, sir.
So, so the quickest way out of this bag without spending the applicant's money, if you looked at the parking cone that faces a sidewalk or whatever it looks like behind the building, what I would suggest, down, down lower left on that cone, a little further left, is just putting depressed curb, like a handicap curb, eight foot wide, even up maybe an inch or so, so that it's malleable for a truck if it's got to get back in. I'm not sure what recycling you meant behind the building. I'm sure there's going to be some resters, hopefully it's not a big. But that is the easiest way that if they need access, they could drive a smaller engine over that. And that's really, there's a few things. You know, they want a building that's on fire. Two, if there's a sprinkler connection, they want to be able to get two. But that is the quickest, cheapest way out of the bag without spending the applicant's You'll, you'll see this occur in another review, which, just trying to think of residential plan, they will come back through the applicant. So I'm just trying to save you the time, the effort, the money, and make it real easy as a fire guy. If I had to drive there as an engineer, that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Ryker. Will the applicant's amenable to that?
Yeah, he will certainly do that. And one of the engineer's comments was to provide a, a, aisle to drive into the basin for maintenance, so we'll do a depressed curb.
That's, that's all you need to get over.
Okay.
And as a reminder, I would put some testimony on the record about stone boxes in the basement. It is storage technically, but you should clear it out and get that on record.
We will. We'll have the applicant testify because it's, he's the owner. So if you would address yourself to the, to the remaining site issues, storm drainage, landscaping, utilities, there's water and sewer there currently, right?
Yes.
And if you could address the other issues, lighting, et cetera?
So we talked about the sidewalks. There is a small two-hundred-and-seventy-square-foot, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-square-foot outdoor seating area to the south of the building. There's also, I'm sorry, there's also design grades in the parking lot throughout the site, approximately one to five percent. And as I mentioned, the Ocean County Planning Board has approved the plan, as well as the local fire district number four. And Anthony, if you could please go to the next sheet, sheet number four, is the grading and utility plan. Now, I'll talk about the storm drains first. There's a storm drain system that we've designed. It consists of inlets, some, some B-type inlets and some A-type inlets. It has twelve-inch plastic HDPE pipe, collects the water storm runoff from the main parking lot, sends it north into an infiltration basin through a flared-end section where it infiltrates. And then, when it fills to a certain point, goes through an outlet control structure located on the south side of the basin. From there, it flows into another twelve-inch HDPE storm drain pipe into a B inlet, and then goes into twenty-seven SC, seven-forty underground recharge chambers where it percolates into the ground, and also receives water from two inlets on the southern parking area into that portion of the system. We've designed the system as minor development. The outlet is after the infiltration for larger storms, storms larger than, I believe, the twenty-five-year storm. Twenty-five-year storm doesn't have any outlet discharge for storms larger than either the twenty-five or the hundred. There is an overflow inlet, a inlet on Forest Hill Avenue. There's also an emergency spillway located at the top on the north side of the basin, which is for storms larger than the hundred-year storm. The hundred-year storm will not overflow along the emergency spillway. And the strange system, as I said, was designed for minor development according to the standards of soil erosion control from the Ocean County Soil Conservation District, and they have approved as this, this project that you're looking at. We've received their approval. However, there was a comment in the engineer letter about the total limit of disturbance, and I wanted to bring up that important point, that this, it's important to the applicant and to my design process when I did this, that we make sure to keep it as minor development, which means, as you sure, I'm sure you all know, less than one acre of total disturbance and less than one-quarter acre or ten-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety square feet of added impervious motor vehicle or regulated impervious surfaces. So totaling right now, we have approximately forty-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-nine square feet of disturbance on the property, plus approximately thirty-three-hundred-and-forty-one square feet of disturbance in the public right-of-ways, for a total of forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety square feet. That equals zero-point-nine-nine-eight acres. It's very close to an acre, but I would wanted to make it clear that the applicant is going to stay underneath that acre, because if we switch to major development on this project, it would have to be totally redesigned, and this type of development, in all honesty, probably would not fit on the property. So we are going to be very cognizant of that fact. By removing the two physical spaces that we talked about before, that's going to give us actually a little bit less of disturbance and give us a little more cushion to the one acre of total disturbance, which we're close on. We're not very close on the quarter acre of added motor vehicle surfaces, only about point-one-five acres, where point-two-five is allowed before triggering major development.
Sir, I hate to change subjects for a second. We talked about a fire truck or fire apparatus getting to the rear of the property before we talked about the drainage plan there. Do we have a floating truck back there, or can we get back there still?
No, you're not getting back there.
That's...
Mr. Reston, the only benefit of this is we're going to be able to get to the basin equally on both, both levels.
So they can get, they can get to a portion of the back, maybe work from there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's...
I think that they would prefer being able to get to the basement.
That makes sense to me, yeah, especially with the configuration there.
As far as rear access, unless we had the New York Fire, Fire Boat. I thought, not today, fellas.
Okay, well, at least, yeah, at least they're trying to get it somewhat back there, and they can use their...
Yeah, listen, the bottom line is, based upon the new fire code, what happens is that, in engineering standards, as long as you're able to hit about seventy-five percent of the building and get, you know, two-seventy access around it, you're, you're good to go. There's no requirement saying that we absolutely have to have three-sixty. With that being said, the fire department likes it, we like to see the fire department happy, you know, and, and we like, you know, to be able to sleep at night with the applicant, knowing that if fire happens, we did as much as humanly possible to prevent it. You know, but this is reasonable.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah. The utility services are going to be taken from an existing water main and an existing sewer main. Both of them are located on Forest Hill Avenue. The Jacksonville MUA has given us a water and sewer serviceability letter subject to, if this project is approved, their final approval is going to need an application process. But they have sent us a letter, which I have, and they say that water and sewer is available. We sent them this plan along with a letter, and that's the response that they provided back to us. Now, that's the utilities and the drainage. There's also some underground water service and like electric telephone cable TV-type service underground running towards the south of the Forest Hill Avenue driveway into the building. In addition, the restaurant, southernmost one thousand square foot unit, we have provided a grease trap for that sewer lateral, which will, is located as close to the building as we possibly can get it, such that it will trap grease in the sewer trap and then will connect into an existing cleanout on the property and into the eight-inch PVC ST or thirty-five sewer main at approximately half a percent that exists in Forest Hill Avenue. If we can move, please, to sheet number five, is the landscaping plan. We, our landscape architect designed a landscaping plan, consists of various trees and shrubs. There were certain comments on this plan by Mr. Peters, the planner, and I believe the engineer, as well as the expert on trees, Sherry. And they noted that each island needs a tree, and applicant has agreed to put a tree in all the islands. We neglected to do that on this plan. There were some other comments about the landscaping plan. We will comply with those. However, one comment in the tree expert's letter, she requested to put some grass in the two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-square-foot outdoor seating area on the southeast corner of the building. That one we're requesting not to do, so maybe we'll put pavers there so the tables will sit better on a hardscape surface at that location.
Would that be enclosed at all? Would there be any kind of like fencing around it, or is it going to be open?
Just open.
Okay.
Chairman, if you're willing to give them a full testimony, I don't know if the board wants to talk about outdoor seating now, or there, or if they're wrestling that one, or if they want to talk about the outdoor seating.
Which would you prefer? Let's talk about the outdoor seating. We're on outdoor seating, and I was just thinking, wow, that'll be nice, outdoor seating. Let's discuss the outdoor seating.
Okay, so it's...
And the menu.
We don't have, we, we don't have the luxury of having the fit-up plan for the seating inside of the restaurant. for the seating inside of the restaurant. However, as I said, it is a rather high, even with just per-square-foot seating, has 20 spaces for the one unit, the one restaurant unit to the south. But if you would like to talk about outdoor seating, we were going to put some tables there. It wasn't going to be very fancy, I would have to admit at this point. Since the preliminary stages, we're not even showing benches or tables or anything there.
I think we can have Mr. Angeles testify about that along with the storage area for the restaurant. So when he comes up, why don't we have him address that?
That's fine. Is that okay with you, Mr. Peters?
Certainly.
Okay.
All right.
Sheet number six, lighting plan, please. The lighting is accomplished by three wall packs. Three wall packs at a 10-foot mounting height along the east face of the building. There are RAB 50-watt LED wall packs at 10-foot mounting height, as well as seven RAB-brand 105-watt LED shoebox-style downward-facing pole lights mounted at 18-feet mounting heights. This will provide the following foot candle lighting levels in the pavement and pedestrian areas: an average of 2.1 foot candles, maximum of 9.9 foot candles, a max-over-min ratio of 18.2, an average-over-min ratio of 3.8. In general, we have just about provided the minimum as specified in the ordinance of 0.5 foot candles in the pedestrian and pavement areas. However, there is a slight deviation from that at maybe .2 foot candles at one or two of the point on the grid that Mr. Peters points out in his letter, and applicant is requesting a waiver for that. Our office usually designs pedestrian and park and area lighting at a half of a foot candle minimum, which we think provides good nighttime pedestrian movement, vehicular movement. And also, we try to eliminate hot spots by putting a number of pole-mounted lights around the site, which will give some respect for dark sky compliance at night. Usually, we use a 4,000K color spectrum for those. 5,000 is very bright and harsh, best for security cameras. 3,000K is softer, more of like a soft white... Sorry, a soft brown or colored light, like in a residential setting. We think 4,000 is good because it provides sort of a medium type of a light color spectrum. You can see the wall-mounted packs here, the pole-mounted packs to the left of them, and the foundations that we have designed. The foundations are up about, out of the ground about six inches. And then the pole will be cut at 17 and 1/2 feet, given an 18-foot mounting height to the bottom of the lens. We've also degraded the lighting on all of the lights, the wall packs and the shoebox lights, shoebox lights to an 80% when we design this. That means that in four or five years, when there's dust and the lenses maybe get a little obscured, what you're looking at here with these lighting levels and the point-by-point grid, as well as the ISOFO contours, shows what you're going to be getting after the building has been in operation for approximately five years. Finally, I want to just briefly take into account some variances in design waivers as a general discussion. And then we'd be happy to go into any more specific ones. But although the applicant did not meet all the bulk requirements, many are due to the unique lot size and shape. The applicant designed the proposed site improvement so as to not create any crowding or any substantial detriment to the adjacent properties. As you will recall, he's moving the 10-foot setback from the adjacent lot to the south to 20 feet.
Paul, just stop you there real quick. All of the bulk variances, with the exception of the parking variance, are pre-existing conditions that are essentially driven by the size and shape of the lot. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so there's really nothing the applicant can do about them if they're going to develop this property at this location? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so does that qualify as a hardship?
For instance, yes. We mentioned the deficient lot size, lot width, and lot frontage, the location of the property on a county road, the location of the property on a corner lot, two-site triangle easements, and a county road easement existing on the property, the lack of available area and frontage on the adjacent lots, and the required 20-foot setback to the residential use to the south, which is a nonpermitted principal use in the highway commercial zone.
So all that's pre-existing, correct?
Everything.
Pre-existing conditions. And what about C2? Do these variances also, including the parking variance, do they meet the standards for a C2 variance?
The variances are also justified under a C2 variance analysis. That is, the benefits to be achieved by approving the site, the plan, and deviating from the zoning requirements outweighs any detriment to the zone plan, ordinance, and public good. And let me give you three quick reasons. The existing building will be demolished and replaced with a new building, thereby eliminating the two variances as related to the existing structure. Those are setback variances. And once again, the existing 5,000-square-foot building, which is much larger, will comply with all bulk setback requirements, even as Mr. Peters stated in his letter that this small 20-foot section of Pine Crest Avenue is considered a front yard. And the building setback from this corner, the closest corner of Pine Crest Avenue to the building is going to be a 77 and 1/2-foot front setback, actually, to the rear of the building, where 60 feet is the minimum front setback required in the HC zone. The second reason being that the new building will be more aesthetically pleasing than the existing one. And finally, the proposed site plan uses the property in a more efficient manner than currently exists.
And does the plan provide adequate light, air, and open space and otherwise promote the purposes of zoning as set forth in the municipal land use law?
Yes, in my opinion, as a licensed planner, it does. And finally, design waivers requested. There are various design waivers requested for the project as listed in Mr. Peters' letter and the engineer's letter. And many of the waivers differ only slightly from the design standards in the ordinance. For instance, on curb returns, the minimum design standard in the ordinance is radius of five feet. Many of, some of the radiuses we have... Can you please refer back, Anthony, to sheet number three? Many of the curb returns are five feet. But where five feet is the minimum, we do have some that are four, and one that is three. The two on the island to the south are five. But I put some four footers in there. But these are very close to the actual standard in the ordinance. However, for this site, as you all know well, I'm sure, although the Jackson Township has a good ordinance and a thorough ordinance, it's hard to find a one-fits-all. And on this site, in my opinion, as a design engineer, minor deviations, we are requesting, the applicant's requesting, design waivers for. And also, the applicant has met a significant number of the ordinance design standards. We met a very large number of those. Now, in general, the standard for design waivers is to show a hardship or a practical difficulty and to demonstrate that the waiver request is reasonable and that it follows the intent of the municipal ordinance. The standard for relief from a design waiver per MLUL Section 4055D-51B is that the board yourselves may grant a design waiver if, quote, "the literal enforcement or one of more of the provisions of the ordinance is impracticable or will exact an undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question."
It's a reasonableness standard. It's a reasonable departure from the criteria. Right.
And all the departures that are proposed are reasonable, in your opinion, correct?
Yes, we are not out of the ballpark on anything. We're close to the standards or meeting many standards.
And the applicant, other than the design waivers and the variances that are set forth on the plan, the applicant is willing to comply with the comments of Mr. Clea and Mr. Peters and, I believe her name is Sharon, correct? Except as you've testified to.
Yes, and they've requested applicant will comply with many. And many of the notes where Mr. Peters and Mr. Clea say or request applicant shall revise the plan or request a waiver, the applicant is requesting those waivers.
Just a couple more issues, real quick. The delivery trucks that will be coming to the site are box trucks, correct?
Yes, box trucks are FedEx size, maybe a little bit larger, UPS size. Usually, a little smaller than the SU-30 vehicle that we've shown, the turning movement on sheet 13. That's a single unit. That's a large box truck.
And there's not going to be any outdoor storage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and... And as indicated, you will comply with the other comments that are set forth in the various review letters, correct?
Yep, the applicant will comply with those and any other local outside Angie requirements. And just a quick recap. Ocean County Planning Board approved the project August 2023. Ocean Soil Conservation District approved it December 20th, '23. Ocean County Health Department approved it November 20th, '23. Jackson Fire District approved it December 1st, 2023. Jackson Township MUA Warranted Serviceability Letter was granted on November 9th, 2023. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board or Mr. Clea or Mr. Peters. If I haven't gone, I'm sure I missed...
Thank you, Ms. Bliss.
Mr. Clea?
Just a couple.
Yes, sir.
The... You'll pay into the fund for the absence of the sidewalk?
Pedestrian fund.
And all signage will comply?
Oh, yes. There are two signs shown. There are 30-foot setback. The ordinance has setback size requirements according to how far they're setback. They're both setback at 30 feet. And the applicant is requesting a waiver. Since he's on two streets, he's allowed two signs internally illuminated. They'll comply with all the height and size requirements. But he's requesting that he has both of the signs on North County Line Road instead of one sign on North County Line Road and one sign on Forest Hill Avenue, just for better exposure on the county highway route 526.
But the area and the height will comply?
Correct.
And the applicant's correct in that he would allow to have two signs, one on each frontage. And he's requesting that the two signs more or less front on North County Line, which makes sense because I don't really think that Forest Hills is really a high-traveled roadway. And the only other question, and Mr. Peters pointed it out to me, can you talk about the intersection offset between the Forest Hills driveway and North County Line Road? I think 100 feet's required by ordinance, and I'm seeing maybe 25, 30?
Yes. Now, that is a section of the design standards whereby the nearest... Actually, it actually does... I made a mistake asking for a waiver, a design waiver, for that specific separation distance from the center line of the street. Because that, Mr. Peters pointed out, applies to a parking lot which has, I believe, 50 more spaces, 50 or more spaces in the lot. Nevertheless, the nearest ordinance section 244, 197 F2A3B, access drives, talking about Forest Hill Avenue, access drive, once again, 24-foot-wide two-way drive aisle, has, shall not be located closer than 100 feet to the nearest right-of-way line of an intersecting street, 100 feet. And in our case, this is 41 and 1/2 feet. So 100 feet is required for a larger parking area than ours, 50 spaces or more. And we are providing 41.5... Sorry, 5 feet. Once again, I would point out the fact, number one, the applicant is requesting a design waiver or a maybe explanation to the concern that Mr. Peters had with the design. Number one, there's a 30 by 100-site triangle easement at the intersection of Forest Hill Avenue and North County Line Road, whereby if a car is sitting at the intersection, looking to the north, this larger triangle gives him adequate site distance to the north to see approaching vehicles. Speed limit's 40 miles an hour. The county also asked for a site triangle that we would make, an Ashtoes site triangle in this case, which we did. We provided one for the same type of a vehicle exiting at the North County Line Road. Egress, providing them sufficient site distance to the north of County Line Road.
Is Forest Hill a heavily traveled or a lightly traveled road, to the best of your knowledge?
I would say it's a major road through Jackson.
No, 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 not County Line.
Oh.
Talking about Forest Hill.
Oh, I'm sorry, Forest Hill. There's not a lot of traffic on Forest Hill Road, the three times I was there.
Does that address your concerns?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Is there any reason you can't move that access point further away? Put it at the other end of the parking lot? Would that increase your yield in parking? Is there any detriment to the plan by moving it further away to the other end?
Yes, we designed a throughput type of aisle that lined up with the two streets so that it would provide a better operational vehicular circulation flow through the site.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Heller?
Yeah, back to sheet 13. And we, I know you did briefly touch upon trucks, deliveries, et cetera. So you're depicting here, I'm seeing egress. Can you point out the ingress, how you plan on entering, maybe showing it on the map with your laser pointer?
Pointing out?
Pointing out deliveries, how they're going to enter the site.
Deliveries.
K-turn, et cetera.
Sure.
Sheet 13.
So, Anthony, can you bring up the last sheet, 13? So in this case, you'll see this is a preemptive K-turn maneuver. The box truck, which is considered an SU-30, as shown in this diagram, would pull into the site heading south on North County Line Road, come into the northern driveway, pull into the drive aisle partially, back his truck up into the loading area, load, unload, and then exit out of the same driveway to the south. out of the same driveway to the south.
Okay, so you're saying 30-foot is going to be the maximum size that you're going to be expecting for this site?
Yeah, and I wouldn't even say that they're going to be that, that large most of the time. Most of the time it'll be small, like a UPS truck or FedEx truck, significantly shorter wheelbase and greater turning radius.
Right, because it is retail, right?
Yes.
They're going to have, they're filling their stores up with some kind of trucks, not only UPS. What happens if a container comes, a 40-footer?
A 40-foot container truck, like a, like a semi?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't do a drawing template, I could get a technician to show you something.
We don't, I mean, the thought was that it would, we would not have semis on the site, you know, the idea is not to bring a semi on the site. So the applicant, I think, would stipulate to, you know, a smaller truck being utilized for deliveries, that's not a problem for the applicant.
I think the safety concerns, for some reason someone pulls up a tractor trailer, can't park them in the kind of whatever.
Right.
It's unsafe.
Right.
Right.
And blocking the cars in the parking lot as well.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right. Nothing bigger than a box truck. Yeah, good.
And while we're on the loading, maybe applicant stiplicate, to stipulate, sorry, to the outdoor seating, if none of it should potentially flow over to the loading area. The restaurant is being right there, correct? So, or is it on the other side, the restaurant?
Restaurant is to the south.
Oh, okay.
Next to the outdoor seating.
Yep.
But we have no, the applicant has no problem stipulating that the delivery trucks will not be semis, you know, they will be smaller box-type trucks, that, that we agree to.
Ms. DeMarza, did I see you interested in asking a question?
Thank you. Is this, this is where the taco truck is right now?
Yes.
That's where it is?
Yes.
And so that won't, obviously, that won't be there anymore?
Correct.
Correct.
You can't talk, you'll have a chance.
Not, not yet.
Soon, soon.
We're almost there, we're almost there.
And operationally, how, how often do you expect to have trucks come? Is that going to be a daily thing? Do we know?
Well, I'll defer that to the applicant. One thing that the, was asked in the engineer and planner letter were the frequency and type of removal for trash and recyclables, that's a private hauler once a week for recyclables and trash. So probably generate that much as far as the deliveries go. Jose can testify.
Any other questions from the board? Gentlemen are okay? All right.
Thank you. Yes.
There was a comment from the certified tree expert about planting the outdoor seating area, so without discussing the outdoor seating area, I just want to remind the board that generally we don't give waivers of the tree experts. So I also had to deal with their request not to comply with the certified tree expert.
Could it, would it be possible to have trees and planters?
Well, my, my point is is that the certified tree expert doesn't sit here, they're saying we don't want to do with the certified tree expert, the expert asked for it, so we're going to be in condition of the approval. Now the certified tree expert gets to decide their fate. If they comply with the certified tree expert, they're done, if they can't comply with the certified tree expert, for some reason they take their deals around about, then they have to come back here.
What I would say is, we're going to comply with the certified tree expert everywhere except that area, and as to that area, we would be willing to sit down with the certified tree expert and accommodate her concerns with regard to the rest of the site. So if she wants additional planning in the rest of the site, because this area's going to be free for tables, fine with us, so.
I just want to make it clear, the more I'm saying is that they're, they're not granting a waiver from the tree expert's report.
We can't.
Well, I, I don't think you can.
It's a, yeah.
You're saying the applicant is successful, so you need to, the issue says you have to comply with her report.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
As a comment, though, planting a tree right up against the side of the building, you're going to choke off the tree road. And what I've seen in other places is they put a planter out there, or if it's like, over by Manja, they've got palms that they bring in and out, and quite honestly, that stuff looks a lot better than a tree that's going to get the bark beat off it, get choked out by half a building in the sun, and, you know, so if the applicant wants to go with some kind of vegetation that is, you know, either flowers or palm or whatever, and eats a tree out every day in a concrete item, you know, how far is it going to get? Seriously, one or two trees? I understand Mr. Peters' point, but I think the tree expert has a sense of...
Well, so let's just go back to that for a sec. So which, which condition in the?
So it's her item number E, she says revise the plan to provide plant materials within the open area at the southeast corner of the building to reduce unnecessary lawn and its maintenance. Okay, so she wanted plants in there, like shrubs or ground cover to replace what she thought was lawn, it looks like.
All right, so, so here's where we're at with this. So this goes back to the conversation that we had a couple meetings ago against, of requirements first recommendations, all right, when it comes down to some of these outside agency approvals and letters. So due to the fact that there's no, I don't believe that this is a statute or code or ordinance that's required for, you said it was E, right?
E.
All right, so we can view this as a recommendation at that point. If we view it as a recommendation, and the board may want to take a vote on this, but if we view it as a recommendation, the board has the ability of then, of then allowing a waiver to take place, all right. Yeah, so, so the, it's paragraph E of the forester reports, revised plans to provide plant materials within the open area at the southeast corner of the building to reduce unnecessary lawn and its maintenance. Now, there's no statute, there's no code, there's no ordinance, there's nothing that's specified into this, which, without having conversation with the forester, it leads me to believe this is just a recommendation. It would be similar to like the fire department making a recommendation that trees be planted along X, Y, and Z. If it's not the fire code, then it's kind of really a recommendation. Now, the board has, it's got a, you know, maybe this is a good situation that we have here to figure out, you know, what we want to do in this type of situation moving forward. But if the board views it as a recommendation, because it's not fundamentally required by a code or statute or ordinance or, or anything of that nature, then, I mean, we have the ability of determining whether it's reasonable or not.
Could we ask that the applicant revisit the tree expert and, and explain a little better what, what the use of that area is, and then get an agreement from the tree expert that she might have a change?
What I think would be better, so we don't have a problem, we go to her and then she has a different idea, and then maybe we have to come back here. Maybe we get the waiver with the stipulation that we're going to put in some potted plants to beautify the area. I mean, she doesn't want grass there anyway, she wants plantings. So we'll put in appropriate potted plants per season in that area so as to allow it to be a nice little outdoor seating area with plantings.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so we're willing to do that.
What does everyone else think?
I think what the tree expert's getting is they don't want to have a pile of mulch and gather cigarette butts or whatever. So if the applicant wanted to put down Astro Turd, it solves that problem easily. And then if he wants to throw out, you know, whatever kind of species of flowering plants, he's more than achieved not having it replaced with cigarette butts and mulch or whatever. And it's in the front of the building, we all know that every time we do lucky violence, it just becomes a hot mess, and it never looks right, it dies, it doesn't have irrigation. And if the applicant wants to do something nice for the patrons, which I think is a great idea, if we really don't have an outdoor seating in this, behind that, if there are a few of them, I'm most certain that he's going to do the best he can, if it's a traffic, you know, potted plants, flowers, or whatever. But I don't think he wants mulch. I know he doesn't want to have eighty, eighty-two spork in grass that's, that's trampled and it never grows.
Or trees.
Or wood.
Yeah, so, so we would ask for the waiver, and we'll stipulate that we'll, we'll appropriately put in potted plants and/or flowers as the season may dictate, you know, to, to complement the seating area. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments from the board at this time?
I think he's already doing that at that little meeting.
Yes, he is.
So.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we move on, testimony?
Moving on, thank you very much for your testimony.
Architect, let me come real quick, and if Anthony could put up the architecturals, and if Mr. Feldman could be sworn.
Yep. All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last on the record.
David Feldman, F-E-L-D-M-A-N, Principal Architect of Feldman and Feldman Architects, Wall Township, New Jersey.
All right, and your credentials?
I've been a licensed architect since 1993, licensed in approximately 12 to 15 states up and down the East Coast. I've appeared before this board in the past as well as many others throughout Ocean and Monmouth County.
All right, and the board accepts your credentials?
Yes, thank you, welcome.
I'm sorry?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Feldman, would you architecturally describe the building, the proposed surfaces, and if you want to, you can also refer to your color, I know you did a colored rendering that we didn't get a chance to get in by way of a PDF, but if you would take us through that.
Okay, so what we prepared was a, a shopping center consisting of five units. The building footprint is 100 by 50, each of the units is one, is 50 by 20, creating a thousand-square-foot unit. As previously stated, the unit to the south, which the intention is to be utilized as a restaurant, the truck that's currently on-site is hoping to move into there. And we also, and we provided that particular unit to have a basement. That unit, in terms of the basement, would be solely used for storage of supplies, of coolers, as, as previously talked about. And 1,000 square feet is not a very big store, so if you take 1,000 square feet, especially for a restaurant, you put a cooking facility in there, you put some counter in there, you put a couple tables in there, it doesn't leave a heck of a lot of room for, for storage of supplies and, and food.
Freezers as well, they would be in the basement.
That is correct. And so by creating the basement, it's actually going to reduce the amount of trucks that would have to come as frequently, creating a, a space where they could store, whether it be refrigerated items or frozen items or, or paper goods, will reduce the, the traffic with the, the trucks coming onto the site. The other unit to the north is also intended to have a basement as well. That unit, the intention is that the applicant will occupy that unit. Currently, he occupies the business that is on that property now as a paintings facility, and he can, and he'd like to continue to utilize that and, again, have some storage.
So when you say painting facility, it's his office for his painting business, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
He's not doing any painting there?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to clarify.
The other three units are designed to be a slab-on-grade, and that would be a thousand-square-foot unit. And I'm not sure if the applicant has somebody already. If not, he will comply with the, with the ordinance and the zone for whatever use that will go into that building.
Excuse me, may I ask, is there, will there be any flammable stored in that building? No paint?
No, we'll make a representation, but I'll, I'll have Mr. Angeles testify to that as well.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yes. It's currently an office, if you've ever been in there, it's welcome to go in.
As for the architectural considerations regarding the, your professionals' reports, the drawings that I brought with me this evening addresses those, hence the drawings that are up on the screen do not. So the building height, we already, we indicated on the plan that's currently shown, and the maximum height is going to be just under about 22 feet, 23 feet in height, which is well under what your ordinance allows. The rear elevation, for some reason, when we submitted those plans, we omitted the doors to the rear of the unit or units. There's a walkway that goes around the entire structure, so as previously testified, when the loading takes place on the north end of the property, they will be able to go down around the back of the building and load from the rear of the building as to not to disrupt anything going on in the front of the building.
So there'll be five doors in the back?
There are.
Correct?
There are.
As shown on the revised plan?
Yes. In addition to that, there's a door at each of the ends, the south end and the north end of the building, which will allow access to the basements as well as access to those basements through the units themselves.
Could you tell us what the architectural finishes will be?
Uh, yeah. So what we're depicting on the, the north side and the south side, which would, I'm sorry, the, the north and east side, which would face the two streets, is there would be a brick veneer and a brick water table across the bottom of the building, and then a cedar impression shingle on top with a nice cornice detail on the, on the top of the building. In addition to that, the new rendering that we submitted as well indicates the wall pack lighting fixtures as per the engineer's report, and there will also be some gooseneck lighting that will accent the, the signage on the buildings.
Anything else?
The only other thing would be the signage on the buildings is going to conform to your ordinance. You're allowed 15% of the building facade, which equates to about 375 square feet in total, or 80 square feet per unit, which, whichever is less. The 375 divided by 5 gives you approximately 75 square feet per unit, and we would adhere to that as well.
And is this a significant aesthetic enhancement, in your opinion, over what is currently on the site?
Oh, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the professionals? Mr. Peters, this is the time.
Before we get off the architect's testimony, I think we should probably discuss the outdoor seating. I have a responsibility to bring up issues to you folks, you don't need to take my advice, that's the reason we have open public hearings. My main concern for the outdoor seating area is safety. It's four feet from where cars are. Between the outdoor seating area and the curb is four foot of sidewalk, that's it. We should consider bollards in the locations where vehicles might be able to cross the curb and the sidewalk and enter into that area. There should be consideration as to whether or not some sort of decorative fencing would delineate that area so people don't walk in and walk out. I don't know, I guess I could ask, is, is it anticipated that this particular restaurant will have a liquor license?
No.
Okay, so if that liquor license, outdoor seating, that's a problem.
I, I would add the fact that I was, I was listening earlier when you were talking about the plantings. We could design the planters to go around the perimeter of the seating area and act almost as a baluster in itself to the, to deter a car being...
I think that's a great idea. But I leave it to the board because they're not, they're probably in width 18 inches or two feet, so you're going to take some area away from this, quite frankly, small outdoor seating area. But my responsibility to the board and the public is safety. So if in the areas you think a car might be able to enter that area, we put something up, and at least we could say, you know what, we can't stop all things in the world that bad, that are bad from happening, but at least we protected this particular area in a location where the vehicles might be able to... this particular area in a location where the vehicles might be able to just jump the curb and unfortunately hurt someone.
The applicant is willing to certainly have the architect sit down with Mr. Peters and come up with a solution, whether it's bollards or whether it's a combination of some kind of bollard that's a planter, you know, I'm not sure exactly what's available.
And, and entrance to the outdoor seating would only take place from the interior of the restaurant. That's another safety feature.
Yes.
If they had to go inside to be, to go outside.
Sure.
And, uh, inside.
I'm seeing everyone shake their head except for the architect who designed the plans.
Yeah, I mean, I'm. The reason I didn't shake my head, I mean, you know, we're, we're actually showing windows facing onto Foster. Okay? Yes, we could certainly make those doors to go in and, in and out of the restaurant. And maybe perhaps one of them would be a door. But to make that the only way in and out of that outdoor seating area, I think is a bad idea. You have people that might want to go back to their car to grab something. They don't want to go back through the restaurant. You have an emergency perhaps inside the restaurant. You don't want to force people to go back into the restaurant to get out and around. So I think, I think to make, to stipulate that being the only means of getting onto that outdoor, you know, we're not talking a hundred people. We're talking maybe ten people, twelve people.
So if, if you had a break in the design around, just up close to the building, you could have some access, egress and access from a break, but, but the portion that goes down and around close to the.
The parking would be.
Parking area would be blocked.
Agreed.
Okay.
I, I have one question, sir. I might be using the wrong language here. Where the areas that we're talking about putting, planted in as a deterrent for a car going through, it's only two or three spaces. Could you put curb stops for the cars in those spots?
We could.
I think that would really be a real addition, just three curb stops to whatever the space is in front of it.
Right. So the applicant stipulates to, to bollards and curb stops?
Yes.
And the last thing is I, while Mr. Feldman started saying, you know, get ten or twelve people perhaps out there, I just remind the board that that's additional folk showing up in cars. I don't want to necessarily say that they have to provide additional parking because it'll be very seasonal. But just remember that having more area, it's a thousand square foot building, half it's going to be a kitchen, the other half's the seating. We're going to put another fifty percent of that outside. So just remember that it may also require additional parking. At the end of my conversation with the board, I think the outdoor seating is a great idea. I just think we need to try to make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, and the applicant also stipulates to putting one of those windows as a door just to go in there.
Yes.
Sorry, one more small thing about the outdoor seating. Are you planning, I know Mr. Peters said something about seasonal. Is it seasonal or are you doing this the whole year? Are you planning on?
I'll, I'll let the applicant testify to that. I, I don't know what the intent is.
If not, we're talking heat sources, warming the exterior, et cetera.
He's saying seasonal. But he will testify to that. Thank you.
Any other questions to you? Mr. Marzo?
Can you just tell me where the, where the signs are going to be on, on which?
So, so if you look above the doors and, and where the three gooseneck lights are above each of the doors, that's where the signage would go for each store?
Under the lights.
Yes.
And that's for each, each store will have their own. But you wanted additional signage, I think, or no?
Uh, no. Each store will be allowed, I think by your ordinance, seventy-five square feet.
Okay.
Approximately.
There was testimony by the engineer that there would be two stanchion signs on the site, you know, on either end.
Okay.
And that too will comply to your ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, onto the next. Come on up. How was that? Got to raise your right hand.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? All right. Please state your name and spell your last of the record.
My name is Jose Angeles, J.O.S.E.A.N.G.E.L.E.S.
Mr. Angeles, currently you operate a, you have a, you own this site, correct?
Yes.
Through an LLC. And you operate your business on the site, correct?
Yes.
And what is, just describe, what is your business? You're a painting painter?
I'm a painter and that's just an office. People come and, you know, some contracts, they come, you know, they have anything, we discuss this in there. And we have a little display in there like comfort ceilings and little things like that, what we do.
All right. But there's no, you don't store any materials at the site?
I won't store any materials, no.
Okay. And on the new site, the, you plan to use the, the end unit all the way to the right for your current painting business, correct, as an office?
Yes.
And no storage of any flammable materials, correct?
No.
What would be stored in the basement?
Basically, it will be, you know, what we use on the office, paper, you know, miscellaneous we use on the office.
Okay. And the other side where the restaurant is, who, who's going to run that restaurant?
My son. My son runs the food truck right now. So his dream is to have a restaurant. So I'm helping to, you know, plus he does an excellent job.
Okay. And the, you've heard the testimony by the architect that the, the area below would be storage and also for refrigeration, mechanicals, those kinds of things. Is that correct?
Yep. That's why we're looking to do the freezer on the, on the basement and, you know, storage, you know, personal.
And you're stipulating that both these sites would be used, both basements would be used for storage and/or some kind of mechanicals if needed, correct?
Yes.
And nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay. And you've heard the testimony about the outdoor seating. Tell us about that. You agree to bollards, right? Like.
I'm agreed to do for safety, whatever. We can do the concrete things with the.
Those are called bollards, right?
Yep. Or I can do some kind of concrete on the center and dress it up with some flowers on the top. So it's safe. Whatever the architect, you know, propose to be safe.
Okay. And how many people do you anticipate would be?
I don't think we can fit more than two or three tables.
Okay. And that would be seasonal only, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And any other comments or questions?
So you're not going to be operating the restaurant all year round? It's just going to be seasonal?
No, the restaurant we operate all year round except for the outside.
Just the outdoor seating?
The outside won't, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
What's on the menu?
Huh?
What's on the menu?
Whatever we have on the truck plus little excess.
Well, if someone wants to sit out there and freeze and cold, no one's stopping here.
What, what's the name of the food truck?
Well, we close November. When it gets cold, we close the truck. So.
They can come inside then, right?
That's why we're going to do the restaurant. Yes.
They don't even get takeout.
And traffic is last. Scott, you want to come up?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. He's got a question for us.
First thing I can say is that you have a house, you have a green, you have a, what is it?
Yes.
The conversation we had earlier.
Thank you. It's a dream come true. Thank you.
But let me tell you something very briefly about Jose. He came here at what age?
Nineteen.
And how much money did you have in your pocket when you came to America?
Nothing.
Nothing. And what do you think of this place?
This is, this is my country. This is, I'm here almost thirty-eight years. Became a U.S. citizen fifteen years ago. You know, I'm so happy living here.
Thank you.
Cancelled one other, one other one. I would have been here for three of them, but.
You again. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Scott Kennel.
There you go.
K.E.N.E.L. with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Okay. And Mr. Kennel, could you summarize what you did with regard to this application and what your conclusions were?
Yes. We prepared a report dated July eighteen, twenty twenty-three. And it's basically a traffic statement which speaks to existing conditions in the area as well as traffic projections based on the intended use and the projected traffic. Approximately thirty-five trips during the peak hour, the P M. Peak hour. I would say the most critical thing here is with this site today, it has uncontrolled access. So with this land use plan, we're creating two defined controlled access points, one on County Line Road and the other one on the side street. And then as far as the parking, forty parking spaces or thirty-eight physical parking spaces, in my opinion, is going to be more than adequate when you consider the type of uses. We're, we're going to have a variety of uses here which don't always have all coincidental peaks. So it's my opinion, the fact that you're going to have an office in the one end, a restaurant and some other retail uses, that there's going to be kind of a shared parking, that there'll be more than adequate parking based on the dynamics that would exist. And as was discussed, the site's been designed to accommodate delivery vehicles that'll service the site as well as emergency vehicles and refuse vehicles. And the most important thing is we asked, we had Ocean County approval. So the fact that they reviewed and acknowledged the, the design proposed and approved it, I think is, you know, a critical element in review of this matter as well. That's all I have to offer.
Thank you.
Now, everyone in the audience who would like to ask specific questions of the, have spoken and testified, please come to the microphone. And thank you also for your patience.
All right.
Now, go right to the microphone.
Oh, right to the microphone.
No, it's just the.
If there's a hold deal.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a hold deal. Okay.
Hang, hang on. So, so this is just going to be for cross-examination questions of the experts that, that presented. So if you want to give a general statement about something or.
My, my question is.
That, that'll be the next part. But I'll, I'll swear again. So please raise your, raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to the record?
Yeah.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Chuck Lucas, L.U.C.A.S.
All right. And your address?
Twenty-one Pine Crest.
Would you please be kind enough to use the microphone because this is really.
Okay. Is that better?
Yep.
Now, my only concern was the, the sight line going down County Line. When he went through the pictures of the landscaping, what's going right on County Line? What, what size plants? Or did I miss it? I'm not sure.
Anthony, can you please bring up sheet five? So sheet five is landscaping plan and shows the proposed plants. You could see.
Is that the shoulder that you're?
This is the shoulder here, the proposed curb line.
Right.
And this is the site triangle easement. So the requirement in a site triangle easement that no trees or shrubs, two and a half feet or, or higher or lower than ten feet be placed within this site triangle easement.
Right.
And you could see that there's no shrubs or trees, only lawn in that area. So if you're stopped here at a car looking north, no trees or shrubs are in your way.
What's that distance right there?
It's a thirty, I think, believe, there's been some dedications to the county over here, but it was designed, what looks to me, is approximately a thirty by one hundred foot.
Right.
Site triangle, which is much larger, by the way, provides a bigger site radius than an Ash tow site triangle, which is smaller, which has been shown to provide.
Yeah, because it's forty miles an hour right there. That's, that's my only concern.
Yep. It's forty miles an hour. And that's what our site triangle was designed for as well. Forty miles an hour.
Yeah, right. I'm just, I'm just worried about the, the Forest Avenue view. You know what I mean? That's the side street.
Forest Hill.
Right.
Yep.
That's where everybody from the neighborhood comes out and hangs their right. That's all.
So Mr. Sir, normally the vehicle will stop.
Right.
And his eyesight will be approximately fourteen point four feet behind the extended curb line. And he will be looking up at a line that's ten times the speed limit, approximately four hundred feet. That's what forms the angle. And that gives him two and a half seconds of reaction time in order to stop or go according to Ash tow. This site triangle provides more than that.
Okay. Okay. That, that was all, because I remember just seeing the bushes and the things. And I was like, you know, okay. That was it, man. Just want to make sure I get out and not get hit, you know?
Two points. First is, I concur with everything that Mr. Buletza said. Second, this is governed by the county. Mr. Miccolini, your client has to get an approval from the county before Mr. Cle can sign off on the plans that include the existing site triangle easement, correct? So I just, sir, I just wanted you to know that.
Yep. We have the approval already, but yes.
One, two, three professionals sitting here tonight have reviewed that site triangle to make sure that it's adequate so that as you pull up to the stop bar, you can see sufficiently up the road.
Right.
As a condition of the approval, they still have to go back to the county who maintains County Line Road and get their approval again of the same thing that already exists. Okay?
Because I can see right now. Yeah, but there's nothing there.
Yeah. And, and it's, it's a stat, it's statutory requirement as well. So, so they have to provide that. If they don't, then it doesn't work.
Okay.
Yep.
That's it?
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak, ask questions of the experts?
Seeing no one else come forward, I move the clothes, the public cross-examination.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right. Now, anyone who would like to come up and make any comment at all about this particular project?
Anybody for general?
Seeing no one come forward, I move the clothes to general testimony on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to sum up?
I think we'll submit. We've had enough, I think. I think we've all had enough. We've missed at least half the Yankees game already.
Go ahead. It's just the fourth inning. Will entertain a motion or is there any conversation?
I would, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We'll have a vote, please.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes, I think it was very well presented application, very thorough, and the cooperation was great. It was a very clean application. Thank you. I vote yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes, I vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes, very thorough planned application. Helped up.
Ms. Rose?
Yes, thank you very much for your completeness.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, and I'd like to congratulate the applicant and thank him for bringing such a wonderful proposal to this board.
Dr. Kim?
Yes, and I'd like to know when you're going to start building.
Good news because I have two very close Guatemalan friends who are up there all
the time. And they will be looking forward to sitting inside for a change.
Tell your son we like guacamole.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And congratulations.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.